First up, we're going to pull, what was it, G?
Yeah, we want to propose that G3 be postponed to another evening.
Okay, without dissent, okay. And then...
Okay, and the other suggestion is to move item I-5, public hearing for the LID Northeast 36th Drive Up to just right under F, where it says "Presentation Where There Are None." This is to allow those of you who are here for that particular item to be able to be heard earlier in the agenda. And then also to move items 7A and B, a public hearing, and also for an ordinance and resolution for temporary use, to move that up under F, which is right after the LID hearing. And then finally, to move, following those two, to move item number 10A, which is the public hearing for ordinance for VRD expiration abandonment for licensing.
Any thoughts?
Well, since G is gone, H is short. I don't see any reason for it.
Okay.
Don't need to move that one up. So good, just keep it as written? You good? Okay, well, thank you for the thoughts. All right, back up to the top here. All right, comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a councillor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed to speak. Before we begin, because we have a lot of people, I don't know if many of you are here for a first time. The arrangement and the acoustics of these rooms are such that we can pretty much hear a regular conversation pretty clearly from the audience. So if you want to speak to your neighbor, please step out in the hallway and have your conversations out there, okay? Thanks. All right, first up, Timothy Novak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's been a while. I'm Timothy Novak. I was a resident here for almost nine years. Now I live in Portland. I still have my house, though, which I rent long-term at a sub-market rate, because I too, like many of you, believe in affordable housing. That said, I hear there's a lot of pressure out there to look to the villages to begin developing the affordable housing for this city. And I would say that is anything but the best use of that land. It is intact coastal forest that has the potential to be an attraction to an immense amount of the growing numbers of people moving to Portland who find outdoor recreation to be one of their key interests in life. It's why a lot of them are moving from all over the country. It's a place that can be developed to bring a lot of income and a lot of pride to Lincoln City. And that said, we do... Let me see, sorry. And that said, so we do have a changing geography and a changing demography that looks to the outdoor recreation when people are choosing their place. And it will bring more tourist dollars, but tourism is not enough either. The economy here depends almost solely on tourism, and we need to build some resilience into the economy here. And this sort of leads me down a trail to say, I am strongly in support of the idea of getting high-speed internet into Lincoln City so that these same people who are coming to enjoy the outdoor recreation have an opportunity, if they decide they want to stay here, to work here and to start to diversify into the tech industry, into the people who are going to telecommute here, to build some resiliency and to build something new here. That said, we have an incredible opportunity now, both with the Comp Plan update as well as the Nelscott Plan moving forward, to create a new vision for what Lincoln City can be. Because one thing, one of the big challenges that I discovered, and I think a lot of people know about Lincoln City, is how long it is and all of the challenges that that makes. Who got in a car this weekend and wanted to go north or south in this town? What a nightmare, we all know that. Well, how do we resolve this? We build out, we build east to west. Nelscott is the place that we can do that. There is an incredible amount of clear-cut land to the east, between, say, Southeast 19th and Southeast 40-something, that could be developed. That way, we can leave the villages alone and put in there a place where people who need affordable housing will be close to a center so that if they live up at villages, they don't have to spend 45 minutes to get to the... in a Spanish head if that's where they work, et cetera, et cetera. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kim. I believe it's Sharon Cook. Okay. Georgia Roloff.
20... I'm sorry, Your Honor, 2017-05. Isn't that the ordinance we just continued?
I didn't even hear what she said, so... She didn't want to speak.
No, number 11 is domestic foul.
It does say 2017-05, but that's the planning file number.
Is that what you wanted to speak on, was about the foul? Okay, good, all right. All right. Georgia.
Georgia Roloff, Lincoln City. I have come before the board a number of times requesting that the cement dividers on Highway 101 be better marked so that we can have a safer city. And I must tell you that I was surprised and delighted Sunday morning when I went to church and found that my favorite left-hand turn at Northeast 22nd Street was not only yellow at the edges, it was yellow on the top as well. And it is indicative of the fact that it needed to be done because Monday morning, when I went past it, there were already tire marks on it. So it needed to be done, and I want to thank the board, and I want to thank especially Mr. Chandler, who I've been giving a hard time to for a while. My mother always said, "You need to say 'thank you.'" So I say thank you to all of you. And my only proviso is, since it happened probably Saturday night and the Pixies were in town, maybe the Pixies did it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roloff.
Jay Roloff, and you just heard from my better half, and her mother-in-law, or my mother-in-law, her mother has influenced me in the same direction to say thank you, and I'm here to do that. Kip is not in his chair, but if he was, I would direct this to him. I want to thank him for raising the issue about plastic bags this last session you had, and to stick to it. And it was kind of like a small vignette out of Twelve Angry Men. He was kind of up there by himself, he was making his case, and gradually the other council members joined in. I'm very thankful to councillor Hinton for her help and Riley for making the motion, and for the majority for carrying it through. Those kids had the right idea. My church is really behind what they're thinking about. And I just, it's always nice to see the council do the right thing, regardless of how that happens. When it all ends up the right way, we benefit. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I don't have anything marked down here. Olivia Williams, did you want to come up and speak now, or are you speaking at another time? This is for the sewer, okay. And Mr. Blasko, I'm assuming the same thing? Okay. And Corey McGraham? What do you have in mind? Come on up, come on up. Now's the time for that. Come on up, sit down, tell us your name and have at it, you've got five minutes.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Corey McGranehan, and I'm just here to discuss very briefly the fact that I am a person who is wanting to do some vending for the Eclipse. And I'm not looking to do it on an ongoing basis. It would be a temporary amount of time and basically an event-type thing. I've been to City Hall here to try to get an application for a business license, and they have told me that perhaps this topic was going to be in discussion. If I understand it correctly, I know that at this time, you're not allowing any vending out of motorized vehicles. And I think there's all kinds of vending opportunities, not just for myself, but other folks in regards to the Eclipse, and just making sure that we could get, you know, licenses that were, of course, affordable enough and would allow some exceptions to the current rules that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we might be covering that bit there. Okay. Jeffrey's going to talk about the VRDs. Patrick, you're going to talk about 6P. And Nathan, the 36th. I don't know what that means, Nathan. Oh, the LID, oh, 36th Street, sorry. Okay. Anyone who did not sign up or wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on, thank you very much. All right. We have no presentation scheduled. We have pulled G, the ordinance. Resolutions. Resolutions 2017-11, a resolution authorizing directing budget transfers for the city of Lincoln City, Oregon, and the 2016-2017 fiscal year budget. Debbie Mammon.
Good evening. Just normal, normal for us and for other government agencies at the end of the year to kind of do a cleanup budget transfer and look at areas where we might have some overspending. So we have done that, and I've put a list in and gone over each of those items. I don't know, I think interest of time. If you'd like me to go over them, or just have any questions? Okay?
Thank you. All right, what are we going to do here? We're going to do that later, right? No.
It should be now. Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve Resolution 2017-11.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Walkie.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Oblynt.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Ward. I'm sorry, Ann Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Public hearing, public comment. Public hearings continued from June 12, 2017 to receive public comment regarding the formation of the Northeast 36th Street Drive Sanitary... Good grief, sorry, it's the Colomets. Drive Sanitary Sewer Local Improvement District. And that is the first one. Yes, okay. This is the time, yep? Okay. It is now 6:23 PM. Hearing on the Northeast 36th Drive Sanitary Sewer Local Improvement District was open May 8, 2017, continued to June 12. The record was left open. On June 12, the hearing was continued to June 26. Counselors, are there any extensions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest or personal bias? Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a councillor to participate in this matter? Hearing none. After the staff's presentation, any person may speak up to three minutes. If you have questions, your time responding will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name, which you did. If you have any written testimony submitted to the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I think I'm starting off on this, and then I will allow Mrs. Bradley and Mrs. Reed to take over from there. We recently met last week with the residents in this area, had a very terrific discussion. It was an awful lot of fun. And... Anyways, and as we discussed all of the options, what the city would be doing, when, how, all of those different options that you're familiar with. As we got towards the end, there was a recommendation that was made, or a discussion point that was made, that I immediately picked up on, went, hey, this isn't a bad idea. In fact, it was a pretty great idea. And as we discussed it, there was an awful lot of head shaking that was going on. I know the residents will come and say how they feel about it, but it was worth exploring a little bit. And so we wanted to actually begin with that point. And then, Mrs. Bradley and Mrs. Reed will take it over from there. So we discussed all of the different types of building, then building it for seven lots, building it for all 53 lots, for 42 lots, gravity, pressure, hybrid, all of that. And when we got towards the end of this discussion, the conversation turned to how we are requiring them to repay this. Okay? And when they would have to repay the... or when they would have to install the onsite improvements and hook up to the system. In our last discussion on this, we had talked about, within a 20-year period, everyone would have to hook up to the system. That seemed to be a problem. And so the suggestion that came up was, what if the city allowed them to simply pay back the amount that is owed for the main line, either through financing, and a choice on the systems development charges of either financing those or paying it at the time of the hookup, but did not have a timeframe where we require them to be hooked up? I was very intrigued by that. There are some triggers built into our ordinance where people would have to hook up. So the idea is that the residents would begin to pay for the cost of the main line installation and the SDC charges if they desired to pay for that and finance those over time. I like that idea because the city begins to recoup its costs. It's not paying a lot of money, and then it's just sitting out there. We are recouping our costs. And then, once we're recouping our costs, I could not, I couldn't find a good reason to say you have to do it within 20 years because the trigger point's already defined when people are going to have to hook up. Now, when we were finishing, I told our residents that we'd have to go back and look at those a little bit to make sure I wasn't missing any steps. So what I wanted to do at this point was to review with you what the trigger points are, and using those as simply the method of requiring the hookup to our system rather than saying, "By year so-and-so, you have to hook up." So the trigger points are... The first is if there is a documented failure of the existing septic system, the property owner would have to hook up to the sewer line. The second is that there is an enlargement, alteration, or change of the use of an existing building, and when such request requires expansion, enlargement, or replacement of an existing septic system, that would trigger the hookup to the city's sewer lines. The third is any occupancy of a new residential or non-residential building would trigger that connection. The fourth is when an existing septic system is proposed for replacement or repair in excess of 50% of the value of the system or $9,000, whichever is less. That would trigger the hookup to the system. The fifth is that within 120 days of the sale of the real property containing the dwelling or non-residential building by an existing septic system, that would require a trigger. So the sale of the home, the sale of the property would require, would trigger it. And then the final statement that it says is subject to connection triggers. Connection to an available gravity or low-pressure system, which is subject to an approved local improvement district, is required as set forth in the LID formation resolution. So again, as I looked at it, the two parts that I found fascinating was the fact that the city would be recouping its costs through the payment over time on the main line that we would install. The residents would have the option of financing the systems development charges over time or paying those at the time they hook into our main system. And then the triggers would be the thing that would cause the requirement of hooking into the system. So if you look over on the screen at the very last column on the right, and Mrs. Reed will discuss those a little bit later in more detail. But essentially, it would mean that $45.67... Okay, if you can point to that, Stephanie. Keep going down. That's what would be the financing charge that everybody that has a home or a potential hookup would be charged. The $21.54 is the amount that they could choose to finance, which is the systems development charges. But then all of the hookups would occur when one of the triggers happened instead of as a date 20 years down the road, a mandatory date. So with that, I'll turn this time over to them, and they can go through some of these options.
Counsel, just one point of clarification. The ordinance on connections is 1312-160. And subsection A says the general rule is if a sanitary sewer of gravity line is installed in front of your property...
Chuck, could you pull that mic up?
If a gravity line is installed in front of your property, you must connect within six months. Subsection B says if a low-pressure sewer line is installed in front of your property, you must connect within 48 months. The exceptions that Mr. Chandler just reviewed are, notwithstanding those timeframes, you have to connect if your septic system fails. You don't say, "No, no, I've got 42 more months to go." You can't basically, if this house is sold, you don't say, "Well, I don't know, there are four months left on my six months." You have to, those triggers kick in on those timeframes. In our code, there's one additional provision allowing flexibility that if you are subject to a local improvement district where you're paying monthly for a local improvement, the council can provide for a different time period than this six months and 48 months in the LID resolution. It does not say you have 20 years, and then you must connect. That's not in the language of the ordinance. Probably that was discussed previously because you wouldn't be paying on your LID after 20 years, and so you'd be freed up, in the sense you wouldn't have a payment, and so you could incur the connection charges at that point. So that's probably where the 20 years came from. But just point of clarification.
So I'd like to go over the options. These are all options you've seen. The first one is the combination gravity-low pressure to serve the whole area. This is the least cost. The two numbers in the columns that I've created were... The first is the low-pressure combination-gravity, where the E1 pumps are the responsibility of the property owners that are subject to have to pump. The second option is what if we said this operates as a system? Really, we're lowering the overall cost of the project by doing this hybrid. And so the people on the pumps should be, could be paid... Or those pumps could be financed with the total LID. So everyone shares in the cost of 10 pumps. So that's the second option. The other one, the third, then B is to go back to the gravity-only. You saw this with 52 connections or 53 connections. The other option would be then to go with 42 connections, which would be the bidle property at 22. And this obviously would be more expensive per property than with the 53 connections. The third is to go back to just the original seven properties and form the local improvement district for those properties. Then possibly create a reimbursement district in the future for the rest of the properties at whatever time they connect. And obviously, we can do, you can do nothing. So comparing the three major options, the first one is the original low-pressure, the lower area, the original seven with gravity. And the first three numbers, those are the total project costs. The sewer main line, my estimated cost for all of the onsite combined, $160,000 per property, per connection. The next group of three here is per connection. That would be $17,000 per lot and approximately 57... The cost of the onsite improvements for gravity is $57.53 estimated. So their total would be $22,895. Their monthly payments, if they also included... Then down in the third tiers of numbers, if they included the SDCs in their payments, their monthly payment would be $152. Then moving on to the entire gravity with 53 connections, you saw these numbers before. Total project, $881,000. That includes what the city would fund and what the private property owners would need to fund as well. That total main line cost comes to $16,000 per. Again, that's based on the 53. So if we went down to the 42, that would be more. Finally, we've got then the hybrid. And the hybrid is, you can see from this column that the total cost is $561,000. For gravity, for people on the gravity line, theirs would be approximately $12,333. The low-pressure would be about $21,333. So, the low-pressure payments would be $91.39. And those could include the main line, the system development charges, and we would pay, we could finance the pumps to make it easier. So then, again, going back to what if we all share... What if everyone shared in the cost of those pumps? It's part of the overall cost of the project. And that's the two columns comparing those two options. Now, the bottom line is, your monthly payments, these are the ones you just saw with the low-pressure, the difference, and they would be equalized. So the pumps wouldn't be financed, and everyone would pay the same monthly payments. I think it's still going to be more expensive to have a contractor install the E1 pumps versus a gravity. But that could vary quite a bit, site to site. So with that, I just want to remind us of what the areas are. These are the combination. In the light shaded is the pressure line, the pressure properties that would need to be on E1 pumps. And then the black shaded are the gravity. And this is option B, same boundary with only gravity. They're all gravity. And then this is the original seven. So that's the end of the presentation. Certainly, I'm here to answer questions or can receive testimony.
Yeah, we needed another option. Counsel? Questions?
Okay. I'll just, I'll say in my preface here that I think it's the city's intention to sewer the city. sewer the city and LIDs, I think, or at least for me, for this particular project.
I apologize, but this is a continued public hearing and so we're at the point where we're asking staff questions, not in deliberations, just reminding you, we're, we still have the public to hear from.
I know that. I'm asking my question, which is this. So the, the hybrid versus the gravity, all gravity, the difference is that the gravity on that one end would have to be pretty deep? I mean, how many feet below the surface?
Well, the, the cost of the gravity is going to be the same. The reason that the pump line is so much cheaper than the gravity is, well, I should say the cost of the gravity is the same up to this point. If we install gravity up to here, that's what comes out to be five hundred thousand. And that is because it's deeper than a pressure line, yes, and the trench is wider and so it's more expensive construction. So it's a lot less expensive to construct a pump line, small, three-inch, three feet deep. And then that's why, that's why that hybrid comes, the cost of the hybrid comes down.
So if we're, if we just stick with the gravity all of the, all the way, then the hookup charges are more because it is so deep?
Yes, the overall cost of the project becomes.
And so the hookup charges are, you know, the lateral and all of that is just more expensive?
Well, the onsite costs are not more expensive for gravity. It's the main line only. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The onsite costs won't change a lot other than the pressure, the pressure. But if you have all gravity, the onsite is about the same for everyone. Some people might have to pump, but that's not the E1 pumps we're talking about.
Okay. And I just have, I don't know, engineers can always find an answer to everything, so maybe I'll ask the non-engineer. Are you an engineer too?
I'm not.
Okay. All right, safe ground here. So for, as far as maintenance goes between the gravity sewer and the pressure sewer with the E1 pumps, can you give us some idea of what, I mean, fut, into the future, because this will be a system, so what?
So what we would have to do with that low pressure is probably flush it out every now and then. And so it would have at the very end of the pipe, at the far end, depending on how people hook up, how many people hook up and when they hook up, you would have to clean that line or, or just, essentially it's like exercising it and, and flushing it with water. And so we'd have ports available to do that. And so we wouldn't have to do that very often, but that is a maintenance item. And then the E1 pumps, if those in the hybrid, the city is maintaining those pumps, we would, all of the, all of the records that we've found from other cities that have these pumps, they're, they're very low maintenance. You're able to take the pump out in one piece and replace it with a new pump. And that doesn't happen very often if they're installed correctly.
And those that are more accessible, they're not, they're not deep like, like if that was the deep gravity?
No. And so, so the difference between the gravity and that low pressure is the E1 pump, we'd require the E1 pump, we would be responsible for that pump. But the gravity, they would have their own pump, whatever type of pump they want to put in, and we would not be responsible for that on a gravity line. So they'd be responsible to the main line, to the gravity main line, which is an eight-inch line.
Okay, so.
So those are kind of the two differences between those, why the price goes down a little bit if, for the onsite, depending on what they want to put in. But we wouldn't mandate that because we wouldn't be maintaining it. And it wouldn't be part of, of the low-pressure system because there has to be certain pumps, certain head and pressures.
Okay, thanks.
I had asked last meeting what the past LID costs per homeowner were as just a reference. Was that able to be determined?
Did you guys have, have that information?
Um, no.
Well, we did, we did, no, because we did paving and low pressure. I'm sorry, I did not look that up. I can, I can.
I just, because I have no idea what the LIDs cost people, you know, and how many have been city-initiated versus the residents. And so that was the other question is how many city-initiated LIDs have there been and at what cost to the homeowners?
And the Voyage Lake LID was initially resident-initiated and then council took it over and then it became a city-initiated. So there were some, some changes there.
Do you think there'd be any significant amounts that would be of a concern in, what Counsel Holden's bringing up? We don't have these numbers, is there anything that's going to shock me when we get the numbers?
You know, we can, when you start taking public comment, we can, we can go look it up real quick.
Yeah, that's why, just because I, I have no idea.
And that, that system was all low-pressure.
Okay, I mean, thank you.
My question, I don't know if it's for you or for Ron. Ron introduced the, the topic of the meeting. And I'm going to hear from the people, but what are the people?
That's, well, I can, I can report on our meeting, but ultimately you've received some letters which we put in the, into your packet and then they will be coming up to testify. And so I will let them speak for themselves on that. But the information I gave you here was the discussions that we had and another option on how to finance it and when to hook up.
Am I going to hear from them on that option too? Or am I only hearing from you on that option?
If they desire to speak on that, they can. I have not talked with them about that.
Okay, but all I heard from you was there was head shaking, so I'm kind of trying to.
Head nodding, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So your sense was that was acceptable, it was?
My sense was that we were all intrigued and let's go find out the additional information because the question that came before, or the same thing that seemed to really bother everybody was the fact that the city could require them to hook up within a certain timeframe, no matter when they had, what condition their septic system was in.
Okay.
And so the question we discussed was, can we leave out a time for a mandatory hookup and just allow the triggers to take place? The one thing I couldn't answer at that point, I had to go do research, it seemed to be a question, was do we require hookup at the time a home is sold? And the answer is yes, we do. But that was a question that that evening I said I had to go back and take a look at that.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right. Now we're looking at the books, we signed up. See if I can get this right. This is what happens when people give me paper. All right, eleven, okay, so Olivia Williams.
Olivia Williams at Northeast Thirty-Six, and I just have some concerns. I did a little research and it seems like they want to put the whole city on sewer system, is kind of what I'm getting. And I was just curious as to, any research has been done into the EPA and their Clean Water State Revolving Fund? It's a federal agency that would give funding to cities that are trying to set up a new sewer system or repairs to their sewer. As far as getting the sewer set up and building on the land, has there been any studies done to see how that traffic would affect the street? It's a very narrow street and if you put twenty-two properties, you know, that's hundreds of people you're adding to a very narrow street. And there's also a blind turn from Northeast Thirty-Six onto West Devil's Lake Road. And also has any impact studies been done to see how the local wildlife would be affected? And are there any wetlands on, underground springs located on the property? There is a wetlands area directly uphill from the property. And have any studies been done to see how current property values of Northeast Thirty-Six Drive would be affected by adding any low-income housing to the street? And there is a study done by George Gloucester at Wayne State University to prove that low-income housing has a negative effect on current property values. It seems as though a majority of the property owners on Northeast Thirty-Six are against the sewer. And it's a little concerning that as everybody comes up at all these meetings saying, no, don't do it, that everybody votes yes. And those are just my concerns.
Thank you, appreciate it. So I have a question for you, Ron. Are you aware of this, the funds, is that something we can talk about?
I'm not aware of any of the funding sources. The other items that she mentioned are items that you deal with when, when property is developed. And at such time as property is developed, those things would be addressed, but they have not been addressed now for the sewer.
Is there a way we can look into a possibility to, or at least find out what the fund is about?
Always checking.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. All right.
Mike Blasquez, Twenty-Five Thirty-Six, Northeast Thirty-Six Drive. My concerns are, what I agree with is Rebecca Stone. Have you read all her comments? There are ten things. I agree with that totally, what she said. I'm in favor of that. And on our property, we would be set up on the top where gravity flow would be ideal. As far as the eight feet, all the research that I've always done and known about, you don't have to go that deep when you're on the top of the slope going down to the bottom. The engineering has all these different ideas. Nothing's came through, is there really, the estimates are from bids from other contractors to put something in? Nothing's been done except for your saying. That's what I'm concerned about. And since we're paying for it, we have the option to say if we want to be on gravity or not. I know we don't, I guess it's a done deal. As far as like Chandler said, that whatever the city wants to do, they're going to do and we have to deal with it.
Thank you. No, you, you've already spoken. I'm sorry. I think we're up to Patrick? Right, were you, on, talking to Patrick Wingard?
The next one.
The next one, thank you. And then Nathan, I think you're on this one.
Hello, Mayor and Council members. I'm Nathan Naught and I'm working with Mr. Biddle for a possible development of his property on the north side of Thirty-Sixth Street. Mr. Biddle contacted me after receiving notice of the proposed gravity sewer LID which proposed serving fifty-three potential connections. Mr. Biddle's estimated cost for that LID was approximately three hundred and fifty thousand just for the LID assessment. If we were to add SDCs and permits to that cost for a potential of thirty units, his total cost before any construction would be approximately six hundred thousand. This amount of money added to construction cost does not warrant development of his property and furthermore would make his property an extreme liability since these costs would keep any development on this property from happening. He would also owe an additional three hundred and fifty thousand on his property. For these reasons, we strongly disagree with the gravity-only LID option, fifty-three Another option that has been presented is the form, is to form an LID to serve the first seven properties on Thirty-Sixth Street. In our opinion, this is a better option than the gravity sewer with fifty-five, fifty-three possible connections, but not the most desirable. This option would extend the sewer line to the lower properties and end close to Mr. Biddle's property. Although this may seem beneficial to any development on the Biddle property, the Lincoln City Code states that frontage improvements must be made along the entire length of the property, including sidewalks and utilities. That being said, the code allows for a private reimbursement district to be formed and states that neighboring property owners must hook up to that line within six months on a gravity system and within four years on a pressure system and pay for those costs associated with the sewer line improvements divided up between the property owners. This option does not benefit anyone, including the developer or property owner, since the neighboring property owners are forced to hook up to the sewer line in a very short period of time. Also, the costs associated with this connection to the line and the reimbursement district have to be paid in full and there's no financing available through the city. This option would impose cost too quick and without the ability to spread out the costs over time with financing. For these reasons, we disagree with the gravity-only option for the seven lower properties. We believe the option to form a combination gravity-low-pressure LID is a good option to sewer all the properties on Thirty-Sixth Street. This option is about half of the overall cost of the complete gravity system and will still allow all of Thirty-Sixth Street to be able to connect to the city sewer when septic systems fail. Mr. Biddle is being assessed roughly a hundred and fifty thousand or over half the cost of this option. But overall, the ability to finance these costs over a period of years helps. We do understand that this option puts more cost per connection to the properties that are fronting the low-pressure line. Although we hope that the city would look at other options to lower the cost to those property owners, including the city possibly purchasing the E1 pumps, since the city will be doing the maintenance on them already. In the overall budget of the city's sewer SDCs, this seems like a small amount that the city could cover. We believe the combination gravity-low-pressure sewer LID excluding the costs for the E1 pumps is the best option for everyone. Almost done. In conclusion, we don't believe it is the city's direction to limit development of workforce housing or affordable single-family homes, but a single assessment of three hundred and fifty thousand plus additional water and sewer SDCs to the Biddle property would be just doing that. The gravity-low-pressure LID would allow the Biddle property and also the neighboring property owners to finance the cost of sewer over an extended period of time. The gravity-only LID to the first seven properties forces a developer into a reimbursement district that forces quick connection periods and without findings for the financing for the neighboring properties or developer. This would not be a good option for anyone. When you make your decision to form an LID from these options, we would encourage you to form the gravity-low-pressure LID with help from the city to offset the additional cost to the property owners fronting the low-pressure line. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Appreciate you coming forward.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Excuse me, thank you. Do you know how many units that you guys are tentatively thinking about?
A lot of it depends on us.
Yeah.
It's, you know, everything's kind of, it's kind of weighing on the sewer.
Have you been able to talk to Chandler?
Nathan, stay, stay a little closer.
I'm sorry. Have you been able to talk to Mr. Chandler about this by way or is this your first time being able to?
I have not talked to Mr. Chandler.
I mean, I guess it would, it matters a lot, I mean, it's all that, how many units, you know?
Right, right now at this point, we're looking, you know, it's thirty units at this point. That's kind of what we're looking at.
That would be if the combination, if that were to happen?
Yeah, yep, yep. The three hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessment for gravity is just not feasible to do anything there. That's why we strongly disagree with that one. It makes development cost way too much.
I was just going to ask for clarification maybe from Stephanie with the head nod or not. Well, it's about, it's about what he said, the thirty, up to thirty units, I think you said. And isn't that captured in here as twenty-two because of the size and that there's some formula that you're using, not as much footprint or something?
Hearing the head nod from Stephanie.
Okay, thank you.
You want me to?
No, I, I just wanted to make sure we aren't talking about something different than what we're looking at, so it's the same. Thank you.
Good question. And I'm asking you to project into the future and if you don't feel comfortable, don't. If the worst option comes down the pipe and you get the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessment, what happens to that property?
Well, that's, I, I can't speak for Mr. Biddle on that, but as, as to develop it, it becomes almost impossible to develop. And then that goes to, back to Mr. Biddle being able to afford to keep that assessment at, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen hundred dollars a month on a piece of property that he can't develop to pay for over half- of property that he can't develop to pay for over half the LID. So either a possibility is an owner can't pay for that assessment, and other than that, it just sits there if he can until somebody comes along that can spend that much money that wants to develop something for not much reimbursement.
I also have another question. With the concerns of the street being so small and the neighborhood and things like that, is it, you know, you have, you've heard the concerns of low-income housing and devaluing and things like that, is that you have intention of, you know, keeping it in mind of that kind of situation?
Absolutely.
So it's just so that it's, can be said?
Yes, absolutely. We're, the intent is to not do low-income housing. Our intent to do is to do workforce housings.
Thank you.
And it, that property actually sits below Thirty-Sixth Street, which keeps it kind of in its own little community. It's not up high right next to it. Yeah, it's down, and the topography's flat on the bottom, but it's lower than the street. So it will help, it will help camouflage the multifamily there. You know?
Great, thank you.
Very informative, appreciate it. One other thing I wanted to clarify, on the nine properties that are going to be in front of the low-pressure, I would, I haven't done enough research to know exactly, but I would assume four of them will have to pump anyways to the gravity line if the gravity line was installed because it's so much, some of those properties are so much lower than the gravity line will be. Does that make sense?
With using a hybrid system?
No, if the gravity system was installed, approximately four, three to four of those properties are lower than the gravity system the gravity pipe in the highway could be. So meaning that the property would be, if the gravity line's ten feet in the street, then there's a possibility that some of those properties will have to pump anyways because their grade is, finished grade is at twelve feet below the street. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
And I'm sorry, is this the one we're still, no, Janet, you want to do, talk about the chickens too? Janet?
Not.
Oh, okay, so we're going off on that one, right? Okay. Back up. Just takes a second here to find all my stuff. Okay. So, motion to close the hearing, close the record.
Same video.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Anyone else who wants to speak? Oh, please, I'm so sorry. Again, the ravages of the common cold there.
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if we can get that information from Lila or Stephanie as well?
Oh, do you have it now? Okay, thanks. Are you tagged, Demons? Okay.
Rebecca Stone.
Caprice Davis.
Thirty-Sixth. And I was just going to let my letter speak for itself, but I thought I might as well get up and just say hi and just say, you know, my thought was kind of stemming from the situation of the Rodriguezes, which hasn't come up, you know, they're sort of in dire streets down there, still not having any kind of sewer or septic system. And the impetus for my letter was just thinking that, you know, any of us could wind up in the same situation, you know, of septic system failure. So given the fact that the city wants to sewer, Lincoln City wants to have everyone on a sewer eventually, and that septic systems eventually do fail at some point, my thought was just, we could meet halfway and, you know, go ahead and run the sewer system. And to me, it would be, I can only speak for myself, of course, and I think I would be comfortable paying like the financed monthly charge. It would be kind of like insurance for peace of mind. If my sewer's septic system ever failed, then I've got an option. I won't end up like the Rodriguezes and not have any solution. So that was my thing. The second part of it is the property develop improvement is really expensive for houses like mine, which are down slope, so I would have to have it pumped. It's probably going to be upwards of twenty-two thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. And I don't, I think by making monthly payments or else paying for the sewer system all at once, the city is benefiting, so I don't see how it impacts anyone when you end up hooking, actually hooking up to your house. So my, my idea was just let the septic system fail, and that would be the trigger. We weren't sure about the sale of the house, which was another concern of mine. You know, what if you end up, you're older and you end up having to go to assisted living that, or something along those lines? That means you've got to pay twenty-two thousand dollars upfront before you can sell your house or put it into your home sale price. And that's just a huge chunk of money, in my opinion. Anyway, I was all for having the trigger be, you know, the failure of the septic system, although it sounds like there's some other triggers too. So anyway, I just wanted to explain that a little more, where that all came from.
I agree. I also, though, have some other concerns, and some of those relate to, so when we put the sewer line in, what about street improvements? The impact of extra vehicles on this small residential road that obviously has issues at both ends of getting into traffic either on Highway One-O-One or the blind corner on West Oleslake Road, that is also an issue. The off-site civil plans, are they anywhere to be seen? Are we doing sidewalks and street improvements? And who pays for that? Where does that come into? Is there a rough draft of the complex that, the thirty-unit complex that we all have concern about going in? Is there any kind of draft on that yet? And if there is, are we able to see that? Are we able to know what kind of complex this is going to look like? Is it federal-funded? Is it a Section Eight complex? These are just questions that, you know, are coming to mind as we go into this, and shouldn't we know this stuff upfront before we even decide on the septic system or the sewer system for this area?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Last chance? Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, keep me on track tonight. I've got a splitting headache now, I'm telling you. It's just not doing well. Take pity on me tonight.
So to answer Mr. Hoagland's question, first of all, now, keep in mind, these are the four LID or reimbursement districts we constructed or a property owner has constructed in the recent years since 'oh-five. They've all, they're all pressure. All of these are pressure only, and none of these included any pumps. All the pump and connection costs were borne by the property owner and not included. So the first one we did was a reimbursement district, Southeast Keel, are one of them. It was six thousand per connection. The Northeast Nineteenth is fifty-nine-hundred per connection. The private property on, actually, it's near this area that a private property owner put in and formed a reimbursement district is forty-seven thirty-eight. And then the Voyage Lake, now that was pressure and paving, and that was twenty-four ninety-seven. That was borne by about forty-four property owners. The rest of these are small, eight, ten, twelve property owners. So it's, this one is more, this is the highest of all the ones we've done, but it's got that gravity line, which is part of the cost difference.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's exactly, thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate you getting that.
I'm sorry, could I ask a follow-up question from, from the questions we just were asked? So putting in the sewer, does that kick in sidewalks and?
Street improvements.
Street improvements?
We did not include those in the estimate. It was just the sewer and repairing the road cut.
Okay, so did you hear that back there? Okay, good.
And we have not had plans submitted for the apartment complex, but they would have to put sidewalk on their portion, and that would be something that they pay for.
So it'll be one of those floating sidewalks?
Let me make a correction to what Mrs. Bradley just said. We don't know what is planning to be developed there because there's no plans that have been submitted, so we can't say single-family dwellings, apartment complexes, because no application has been made.
And then, once that process begins, you start talking about the roads and the impact of traffic and things like that. So it's not just the developer just walks up and says, "Here's what I'm going to build, and you're stuck with it."
Right.
It's going to go through a lengthy process here.
It's site plan review and all.
Exactly.
Which, which will include public comment, right? Or public awareness? Does that go to the public, the planning?
I would imagine that, we don't set up the site plan reviews, but usually Richard does, does that part of it?
Having Richard wait for it.
Yeah.
For subdivision, there's a public hearing process that's going through, and they would require curb gutter, sidewalk, street improvements for that. For a multifamily, there would be site plan review, and I believe there's also a public hearing for that as well. Because I think it's a conditional use.
Counsel?
Please.
Just on the relevance of the numbers for other districts, remember that each district is looked at in terms of methodology on the basis of the improvements that are proposed. So for counsel, it's your decision to determine whether or not the methodology for coming up with the allocation, the apportioning of the sums to the benefited properties are, it's your decision to decide whether or not that methodology is appropriate. Why did they come up with this number of units for this property? Why did they come up with this type of assessment? That's what we're here to do. So it's kind of like comparing apples and oranges to look at what other improvements, because they have entirely different sets of improvements. Four purposes of this hearing, well, when you get to deliberations, I'll give you a little instruction, but again, this is not a, this is about the formation of a local improvement district or the decision not to form one. And it's not about a subdivision, which of course is through an entirely separate process.
And I'm going to say thank you for that, but it kind of is, in that the decision we make can't affect whether that ever happens at all, and it's going to, if we do one way, it will impact the other. So we're, I think we've got some duty to discuss that on some level.
And in making the determination how many units get assessed or whether or not they qualify for deferred assessments under the potential unit method in the LID ordinance, I agree with you.
Mr. Anderson, do you have a quick answer?
All right.
I just had one more. And that's the sidewalk, you know, the improvements, the sidewalk and, I'm just having a hard time with these floating sidewalks, where they don't go from one end to the other end of a particular street. And right now, it's a requirement. Is there some way to bank that, that part of it?
I believe what you're referring to is the deferred improvement agreement?
I don't know what I'm referring to.
That's part of the LID?
That would not be, because the LID does not envision sidewalks.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the multifamily. Never mind.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I would have a couple of questions, and it's nice to know some, four different projects LIDs with the pressurized line. So we've got some experience now, because that's been four or four years or so since the first one?
Mm-hmm, almost.
And so there's always concern, I'm, my question has to do with the triggers that we were talking about earlier, and trying to remember, but even on a pressurized system, you need stuff in the system, do you not? In order, I guess my question is, just to put a pressurized system into the street and nobody hooks up, doesn't do anything for the system, or, and does there have to be some kind of level of flow going into that system? Was that possibly one of the reasons why we had a timeline on hookups?
When this was brought up at the meeting, one of the questions that we had asked was when the first hookup is done, do you have to put in all six of the, six or eight or how many pumps there are? Ten? Do you have to put in all the ten pumps, or do you only have to put in the one pump? And, and the answer that we had is that you just needed to put the pump in for the one that was hooked up at the time. You did not have to put them all in.
Okay. And what about the gravity piece? You know, if, if the, does there need to be anything in the gravity flowing through on a regular basis? Okay, so there's some possibilities there, and that's good. Any experience on pumps and consumers using this, the pressure system of their ability to maintain their part of the operation of the system on these other four projects?
Well, so far, let's see, there's been about six pumps installed total, maybe a little bit more, about eight pumps total on all the projects. It's not, they're not flying, you know, the permits aren't flying off the shelf yet. But, you know, they're functioning.
As expected.
As expected, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have some. So to answer some of the questions that were asked by the citizens, who has bid this out to be? Has it been city engineers, or has it been private companies?
I think it's, it's actually, so are you talking, are you asking who puts the installation in of the pump?
The different bid setups for the different fees.
Who came up with the estimate?
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
Estimate.
The estimate isn't, isn't just an engineer's estimate.
Okay. So it's not an actual set-in-stone cost?
No.
And then, Mr. Velasquez, I think was his name, asked about the gravity or low-pressure, do they get to pick when that, if, if it's a hybrid system and there's gold, do the homeowners get to pick which one of they are? Let's say, I don't, you know, at any point, is it tonight, if this goes, we decide what it will be?
Correct.
You will decide what it will be.
Okay. It doesn't make it any easier. Anyone?
You should have some options.
You know, I'm, I'm not sure that, let me try that question again. Riley, are you, were you asking, because I thought what I heard, the question being from the consumer, was do they get to pick a gravity system or a hybrid system that they want to hook up to?
From their house to the?
To an appropriate system.
Correct.
But in fact, not all, the houses won't have two systems in front of them. If we want a hybrid system, if we pick the hybrid option, the map showed distinct areas where there'd be a pressure system. So the answer would be no, you know, you'd hook up to what's in front of your house. So I.
The topography decides.
Yeah. Was that, see, I wasn't sure what the question was from the consumer.
And with Mr. Naught's information, that even though it's a gravity, it will have to be pumped to the gravity, even in, you know, so that's where the uncertainty comes from.
Could you follow up on that?
Well, especially in the, in the proposed low-pressure area, a lot of those homes are lower than even a deep gravity line, so they would need a private pump. But it's not, it doesn't need to meet the specifications that an E-one meets, it just has to have a.
It just has to have enough to get up to a gravity line. So they run about a thousand dollars, you know, ish.
E1 pumps?
No, the private gravity line, a private, a private pump pumping to a gravity can be private. It does not have to be E1. So those are, again, about a thousand compared to the E1, which is 6,000. If you pump into a pressure line, you have to be pumping into, using the E1.
The way that it was explained to me that helped me is that the E1 pumps are taking the place of one large pump, and they are part of the system to make the whole system work. If you do a full gravity, of course, they're not needed. Now, an individual lot may need an additional pump if their, if their lateral connection is below the line. They would need to, they would need a pump of their own just to get it to that line. But it's not necessary for the system to run. That the E1 pumps are required for the system to run in a hybrid system.
Somebody ask one more question?
Only one.
Just one more. Just because he had, no. That additional, the personal pump, not the E1 pump, but the personal pump, is that in here, can, can, so it's a separate charge?
Well, it's, well, I shouldn't say that. It is in the estimated cost for the gravity connection. Whether you have gravity flow with a lateral or a pump, I said that was roughly a thousand dollars.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay.
For all your hard work on this.
So, Mr. Mayor, what we're looking for you tonight is some direction on how to proceed. And so the first question that is before you is to do nothing or to do something, okay? If you choose to do nothing, it stops, we're done. If you decide to do something, then the next question before you is to determine the size of the local improvement district. If you recall, it was seven lots, which was what was originally proposed. Or we extended all the way up, thirty-six, then you have the potential of forty-two or fifty-three lots, okay? Once you've determined the size of the local improvement district, then the question becomes, what is the construction method that you want to use? Do you want to do a gravity flow only? Do you want to do a hybrid method? If you choose the hybrid method, then the question becomes, the E1 pumps, will they be paid by the individuals on whose lots they're installed? Or will you spread the cost out over all of the potential lots on the property? And then you had a third request that came in tonight that was new. We had not heard this one, and that's just simply the city picks up that cost, okay? Once you've made that decision, then the next decision that you have is financing. What will you allow to be financed? Okay, will you allow the installation of the, of the system improvements? And will you allow the systems development charges to be financed? And in both cases, would you allow the, either or, can be one, can be the other, can be both? Would you allow the residents who want to pay upfront the full amount, would you allow them to do that? So they have a choice to finance it or pay it all upfront, the system charges and the systems development charges. And then the final question is, what will trigger the connection to the system? In the LID documentation, will you base it on a timeframe plus triggers? Or will you only base it on triggers that are already listed as exceptions? So those are essentially the questions, and for me, that's kind of the order of the questions. If I was you, that I would be putting those in, in how to go forward in deciding what to do.
Okay, and then if, in the event of nothing, the Rodriguez family, okay, they have a, okay, they could put in a new septic.
I think that's, I think that's part of the problem. They cannot.
They cannot.
Because?
They can't, they don't have physically the room to install a new system.
Okay. So if we do nothing, what happens to them?
Theoretically, they would have to extend a sewer line to their property, extend our sewer line to their property and pick up the entire 120,000 dollars.
Okay, okay. Well, sorry. You can come up later. All right, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So, give that to me again, the Rodriguezes cannot build another septic system? They can't repair what is there?
That's correct. They cannot repair their system.
Because there's a Senate bill out there, three eighty, three eighty-three, which is, you know, lurking for some funding for repair and replacement of septic systems for, there's a lot out of the state. That wouldn't help them?
No, they have the funding. They actually have the funding through, they have the funding, but they can physically not build a system. So that, it's not a funding issue, it's a, it's a limitation on their property.
Let me make one correction on what I stated. If, if you did nothing and the Rodriguezes had to extend their line, they would only need to extend it to the edge of their property. They would not need to extend it to service all of those seven properties. So it would be less than 120,000 dollars, but they would have to extend it.
About 75,000.
Seventy-five thousand, thank you.
And counsel, the Rodriguezes in that situation would be constructing an improvement. And if you construct the improvement, if you're the Rodriguezes, you can then do a reimbursement district. And anybody who then needs to connect to the line that they built would have to repay them their fair share. That's the reimbursement district model. And so if you define who benefits from the line they build, then in the future, say the next house up fails, they would have to share through a reimbursement district, repay the Rodriguezes, if you, if they wanted to do that. Same is true if the city decided to build the improvement around the corner to the Rodriguezes. If we funded that improvement, we can decide to build public improvements, that's what we do. We don't have to, the do-nothing option is, don't do an LID. But we could build the improvement and say, okay, this is a city-constructed improvement, and anybody that benefits from this improvement will have to, at the time they connect, yes, there's no paying over twenty years, but at the time they connect, they would have to repay the city the fair share. That's the whole purpose of the reimbursement district, that you don't wait and have your neighbor build the improvement and then go, "Ha, now I don't have to share in the cost." So, so I'll just add to the list that Mr. Chandler went through, before you get to do nothing on LID, you get to, well, we could build the improvement, or the Rodriguezes could build the improvement, and do a reimbursement district. Now, I hesitate to mention it because you've already decided weeks and months ago not to do a reimbursement district, but it's still kind of there if you build the improvement. It's just, I think at that time, it was a much larger improvement that you were talking about, not just going to the Rodriguezes.
Was that ever discussed with them?
Can I let these guys answer that?
They cannot afford to extend the gravity sewer to their full frontage. They could not afford to do that. It's 75, 80,000 dollars. And even if they formed a reimbursement district, they would only benefit a property owner that's, a property that's vacant, and so that property wouldn't pay. And then that would be 50 percent. So that would be a pretty expensive, you know, connection. But I think what, what Mr. Appicello was saying is, if you formed a reimbursement district over this whole area, then eventually, if the sewer was extended, then that reimbursement district can pay back toward that lower section of gravity. But it's just the upfront cost of that gravity line that one property or two property owners can't afford.
One of the things you need to do is play this out to the end, okay? This option of a reimbursement district, so that it gets extended to the Rodriguezes' property, okay? If I understand this, and Mr. Appicello will correct me if I say this wrong, let's say it's eight houses up the road, a system fails. So they extend it. Now, as I understand, on a reimbursement district, they would have, if it's a gravity line, they would have to hook up within six months. Everybody along that line, if it's a pressure system, they would have to hook up within four years. So if you extend it, if you play this out, and let's say it's the last house at the very top, they extend that line, then the other people have a timeframe in which they would have to hook up. Did I say that right?
Yes, just that some of the triggers, not all of them, some, there's a difference in the ordinance, some of the triggers, like the sale of property, is the line has to actually be in front of your house. Only if your house sells and the line's in front of your house, do you have to connect. If, however, in some instances, if you go to, "I'm gonna rebuild my septic system exceeding a certain cost," that's as if it's available, which is defined as within 300 feet. So some of the triggers aren't, it's just right in front of your house. Some of the triggers are down the road a little ways.
Okay. Gosh, that makes it just easier. All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right.
Counsel, I just, I guess I just want to clarify, the reason why I brought it up...
Did you have any questions for them?
Not for them, no.
Okay.
Just, the reason I brought it up is if, if you decided to just build the improvement and do a reimbursement district, I would imagine you'd have at least one party that would be immediately reimbursing the city through the reimbursement district, because they have to, their septic system has failed. But there would be others where, as Mr. Chandler stated, there's, there's gonna be a trigger, a four-year trigger. So I don't know how many properties are, it would go past if you just went to the Rodriguezes or just in that area.
I was gonna be brave and make a motion. Are you ready for that?
Well, I guess there will be a public hearing. Yeah, we gotta close the hearing and close the record. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and close the public comment?
The record.
Close the record and close the public hearing.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, deliberation.
I have a question about one of these pages, and I'm not sure which page it is, but it says council options. There's A, B, C, and D, and D says do nothing. I don't see on here the option to have a combination system with 53 connections. Why is that not an option?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Just stay at your step.
Well, she's coming up, I think I'll try to give that a shot, and then, and then, and then have her correct me. The 53, so is based, so when you're looking at the development of the Biddle property, you're basing it on the number of potential lots that could be developed. So that's, I believe that's the 53. If you were to do a lesser amount, okay, there would need to be some sort of a development agreement that would limit the future number of lots that they would, that they would request to develop. Because when you're determining the number of, the number of connections, especially since we don't have anything in front of us as far as a development plan, it's based on the potential number of connections for that property. Anything less would require a development agreement, so that they would limit themselves on the number of units, connections they would make.
And the reason that, what happened was, when we first proposed the gravity only, we went by the planning formula and had them at a higher number. Since then, they came in and said, "This is the realistic number." So we used that for the hybrid. We didn't go back to the 53 and do the hybrid number for 53.
The 42 is the more realistic number?
Correct.
Okay. So 42 would include the Biddle property?
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, for me, and I'm just, this is no particular order and no particular meaning. I've never been completely sold on the superiority of sewers over septic as far as waste management. But I understand we can't develop properties without sewer-ing. The density increases, and we have a real need for that, and it's, I think it's a more efficient system. So I'm in favor of those. I don't think we should be encumbering a property in a way that, or burdening a property so that it can't be developed along the goal lines that we want, which is some more affordable housing options in the city. So we need to take, in my mind, take into account what's gonna hurt the Biddle property. And then we have to take into account, how do we make this easiest for the people who are going to have to pay the bill? Like I said, I've been through this out in East County Portland. I've had to write those checks on four different properties all at once. When the city got, when county got annexed, it was, it was traumatic, to say the least, in how to come up with that money. So I'm sensitive to that. Having said that, that doesn't make it any easier when you have to pay the bill. So I want to move forward with, if I'm getting it right, I like the hybrid option, the one that, the final option that Ron presented to us. It seems to make the biggest, the least impact financially for the people in the immediate timeframe. The triggers seem pretty self-evident. The sale of the property, the improvement to 50 percent or more. And I think someone had mentioned, you gotta pay that money upfront when you're gonna sell your house, but if I remember right, you're gonna pay it at the sale of your house, coming out of escrow, right?
It states that they have to, within 120 days, hook up to the system.
Of the closing of the house. Because you haven't technically had a sale until it's closed. So, yeah, correct, okay. So I'm comfortable with that. Yeah, so I guess I would have to say I'm in favor of going ahead. I'm not in favor of doing nothing. That just doesn't seem an option that works for me. I'd really like to hear more from everyone.
That's exactly where I'm at.
Okay.
What is the option of the city buying an E1 pump?
Ron?
You can spend your money how you would like, but I would caution you that you may set a precedent for the next development. And there's a general principle that, that new development or new hookups to the system should bear their own costs and not shift that cost to the taxpayers or the other people that are already hooked up to the system.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in agreement with you of going ahead with the LID, and I think the hybrid option is the route. And I agree, as hard as it is, the, the cost of any kind of after-system is staggering because you, you see them. They're not buried in a house financed for 30 years and stuff. So it is tough. And that's where I look to anything the city can do to assist in the financing, because the costs are the cost. I mean, we try to find cheaper systems, and I think we've found one that's very affordable to offshoot against the gravity system, which is a real plus. We've taken on the, in essence, maintenance of the E1 pumps, you know, and incorporated those into the overall sewer system department, which I think is good. So I'm in full agreement. I would exclude the time element on the triggers. I, I'm satisfied that the systems don't need to have, have that, have those mandatory time hookups that we've got in that. So I'd waive those.
Mr. Walker?
I would, I consider the E1 pumps as integral to the whole system, and I would like to see those pumps financed between all the properties. So I think that what...
I'm envisioning comes up to 91.39. But I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I would like to know what this bottom-line monthly cost is per property if we go with the hybrid LID, the 42 connections, and the E1 pumps financed.
So, if I may, I think that's, you don't, it doesn't show up, but I had, I had asked Stephanie earlier about that, and I think it's that A2 version of, on this page, that includes the E1 pumps, is that right?
Okay, so it's not the 91, it's 67.21? Okay, good, that makes me feel better, but it's more reasonable, okay.
Okay, so what I need help with is how to set this up in, in getting votes. How do, we have many parts, so do we have a vote first on which option to go with, and then we break down each component of that option? Well, because I've got, we have the gravity method, hybrid method, paid individually or spread out, septic improvement, SDC financing, either or both, and what will trigger the connection, so I just, I think there's some components that have to be voted on separately, or unless someone makes a motion to put all of them one.
I would love to make that motion.
Feel free.
Okay.
Listen carefully, Mr. Appleton.
Help me if I get confused here. So I would like to make, let me find the, the motion for the formation of an LID for the entire area hybrid, including 42 connections, and with the five triggers that Mr. Chandler had talked about, and including a development agreement for the Biddle property. Did I get it all?
What about the pumps?
The pumps are included on that A2 version, is what I'm looking at, on the combined gravity-low pressure. This one right down here, it says any, but Stephanie assured me that includes the E1 pumps. They included in the financed system.
Are you including financing system development charges?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Financing system development charges?
Yes, that's what-
Yes.
Maybe Stephanie, you could come and talk with us about this, because I think it's clear, maybe it isn't for everybody, but everything that's included on here-
A2 is what you-
A2, that includes-
Was there anything in A2 that we didn't want, that you heard on?
I think we, I think that's pretty much what we had. Let me bring up A2, so I can take a look at it.
There was nothing, no trigger that had to be removed?
Uh-uh.
I think the, the question was, do you want to put a timeframe, and then I heard no timeframe discussion, so-
Okay.
The only thing I wasn't clear about was the development agreement reference.
Yeah, they're in it. What I'm looking at, it's included, it says total monthly payment, if city finance SDCs, which means that that's part of the package, and that's included in the price. If I understood step, and the development agreement would be, actually, the planning department would have to do that, isn't that correct? For the Biddle property, that would go with the-
Let me phrase it this way, the staff would put that together-
Right.
-working with the Biddles.
Exactly.
But that's a separate, that would be a separate thing for us to look at, wouldn't it?
The reason for doing that, again, is that if, without something that limits the development potential on that property, they would be able to, if the topography allows it, they would be able to put the maximum amount of what our ordinance allows for the lot development.
Okay, then so within this motion, we should have that limitation?
Which is what I said.
I think that's what she just said, 42 connections.
Right, so it'd be, it'd be relevant to a property development, whatever, and we said this is it, so we don't need to include that.
Well, the way that the methodology is in, in the code, you can use the potential unit method if you have a large property. You ask the planning department, "How, how many units can you get?", I believe that number was 53, and then-
33, for that property.
33 equivalent residential units. But the question is, you don't know what they're going to do, so if you want to bind them to a number, you enter into an agreement with them. The other way is they, they accept the number that staff has provided, and then you, in the approval, in the approval resolution, which you're not doing now, but we're getting direction on, you can allow them to defer units, so they don't have to pay until they actually get the development approval. They can defer their payments. That's one of the options.
Is this one of those times when we should just tell the staff to write a clean one for us and come back? Would everyone else be more comfortable with that, or go ahead with the motion?
Well, with, with what Counselor Hinton has put onto this, I think we've got a pretty good idea of where to go. If there's something that we need to tweak on the development agreement, we'll do so, we'll call you. But I think that is giving us the direction we need to follow.
May I restate it, Kathy, or do you have it? Okay, I've been asked to restate it. I move to, to approve the formation of the 36th Drive LID, which will include the entire area as a hybrid, and, and for 42 connections, which includes the E1 pumps, and also the financed SDCs within that, within that total, and to include the five triggers that Mr. Chandler mentioned, and that there's no set date mandating a hookup time. And with the development agreement.
I think I've got it. I second it.
Motion is second, discussion?
The, what is it that you mean on the E1 pumps, include the E1 pumps as individual, these are individually-
They're part of the system, so just like the sewer line is part of the system and included in that overall-
In order to get a finance, so that, if you're referencing the financing-
Exactly.
Into this-
Exactly, thank you.
Any further discussion?
The E1 pumps would be financed, but financed by the entire-
Part of the system.
System-wide.
Who are on the system, yes.
Let me go for again, then. I'm, we, the motion is a hybrid system, gravity and pressure. So if I'm hooking up to a gravity system, am I paying for, why?
Because it's part of the system, make the whole system work.
How does, how does that become part of the system? Maybe I missed that. The, the E1 pump is needed to take stuff from my house into the pressurized system?
It's part of the system, as they, as I think-
How about if I look to Mr. Chandler and have him tell us?
Think of it this way, if you didn't have the E1 pumps, and you were going to do either a hybrid or a pressurized, you would put in a new pump station to make the whole thing work, okay? So if you don't do gravity, you've got to have pumping to make it work. That pumping can be done either through one single pump, which is a million dollars or so, that's a pump station, or with the proposal with the hybrid system, or with the E1 pumps, that would make it work. See what I'm saying?
No, the, the E1 pump is, I, I thought, so correct me where I'm wrong, but I, I thought were attached to the house, to the individual unit, and pushes the stuff into the pressurized system out front.
Right, but the alternative is just a gravity system, and that gravity system is much more expensive.
Right.
And so the, and so the idea that we're discussing is one of two options for the people that would have to have a pump. They either pay for it individually, or you count it as part of the entire system and spread the cost out over all 42 lots.
But again, and I, that's what I heard, I'm trying to, I'm trying to rationalize from my own mind when you say it's part of the system, and a, you know, and I forget how many units are on the pressurized portion, half, just for the heck of it, 20, 20 units are on a pressurized system, and so there's 20 E1 pumps. And I'm up on a gravity system.
I guess the best way for me to describe it in kind of a crass way is that you're not sticking it to 10 people for an extra $6,000, a lot.
How many E1 pumps are needed for this?
Well, one, one on each house.
Well, not all of them.
No, not all of them.
No, but, but where I have the pressurized system in front of the house, when they're hooking into a pressurized system, they have to have, they have to have something to move it from their house into the pressurized system, correct?
Are you talking about the individual house pump or the E1 pumps?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get clarity on, is are there two pumps or one pump if I'm on a pressurized system? So there's one, one E1 pump in my, in my house, and I'm on a pressurized system?
There are 10 lots that would have to have an E1 pump.
Okay.
Now, as we heard, in the 22 possible lots, or possible connections in the Biddle property, they may still need, or some of them may still need, an individual house pump to get it up to the system.
Okay, now that's an- Stop, stop right there, yes. That's their problem, because they're below grade and below, so they would have to have either a gravity or a pressurized pump, depending, or system in front of their house, they'd have to have a pump.
Either way, yeah.
Right, I agree. That's not the whole system's problem.
Right.
Okay, so that, those are owned by the individual.
Exactly, they are not part of the system.
Yeah, well, you keep saying it's part of the system, but, so that's the middle ground. And you have the other ones that are just the 10, that are just on the system, the pressurized system, which they too, the, the system won't work unless they have that pump.
Unless you built it gravity.
Right, but we didn't, we've already, we've decided it's a hybrid. See, I'm still trying to figure out why the, the gravity folks need to share in the cost of a pump, and you, you keep calling it part of the system. And I don't understand that part of the system discussion definition, that's all I'm looking for. So I feel good about-
So-
-reducing your cost of a pump, when, when I don't need one, but I have a more expensive gravity, or, yeah, gravity system in front of me. That, that's all, I'm, I'll go with it as soon as I figure it out.
I think it, I think what either Stephanie or Lila told us is that's in lieu of a pump station, which is part of the system, and-
I don't, I don't, I think you guys are making that up.
Okay, no, so the cost to do a gravity system-
Right.
Is $881,000.
Yeah.
The cost to do a hybrid system is $561,886.
Right.
Okay?
So now you want to stick the gravity guy with part of a pump for the cheaper system?
The cost per individual lot of the $881,000, this would be for 53 connections, is $16,000, okay? The cost of the gravity portion of the system, okay, of the hybrid system, if you didn't, if you didn't equalize the cost, the cost of the gravity portion would be $12,333. The cost of the low pressure, so those 10 lots, would be $21,333, okay? We've been talking about a system, if you look at it as a whole and equalize those costs by financing them over the entire 42 connections, then it comes out $16,000, some, $16,761, okay? That part is really up to you on what, on how you want to do at it, or do with this. We looked at it and said, the E1 pump is an alternative, system is an alternative to the gravity, and therefore, to make it fair, you would equalize that cost over all 42 connections, which is certainly your choice, if you want to have the gravity ones pay $12,333, and the non-gravity ones pay $21,000.
I have questions about those that, on the gravity feed, will still need a pump to get it into the gravity. So now those people are going to have to pay for a pump separate than everybody else who they're getting an E1 pump.
So that was the $1,000.
Right, so there's another set of pumps that aren't going to be financed, but other pumps are, so that's where, another, what about that?
Well, I mean, because your house sits below, I mean-
Right, so the gravity pump to gravity.
I think the question is, can those be financed, thrown into a finance then? I mean, because the only thing we can really do is provide financing, you know, if we so, if it makes sense.
Right, I'm, I'm asking if we're going to do this whole system, wouldn't those be part of that system too? Because their system, their gravity is not going to work to get into the gravity without the pump, just like the E1 pump is not going to work to the pressurized system without that pump. So why not include those possible pumps into that as well?
I was just going to say that those that you're speaking of, from the gravity up, those are personal pumps. The E1s are city-maintained, the city would not maintain the, the personal pumps.
Because-
Different type of pump.
Because why?
Because they're on private property.
Because it's unique to their property.
So, I understand. Yeah, you're good? Okay, any further discussion? Please say no.
No, no.
Thank you. Kathy, roll call, please.
Okay, here we go. Williams?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pogland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you all for your, your patience on this, I know it's-
Please open this up.
It was a tangled web, but got through it, so thank you. And thank you to everyone who participated in the hearings and the meetings, thank you very much. Okay, now we move to another one. We just did that, we did that, we're at six, right? Public hearing, economic opportunities, right? Okay, public hearing, do accept public comment on adoption of the 2017 Economic Opportunities Analysis Analysis and Housing Needs Analysis that includes an updated Buildable Lands Inventory Planning File CPA 2017-02. Mr. Townsend? Is that going to take you a minute, Richard, you got a few minutes of talk in there? Sorry? You got a couple of minutes of talk in there?
I thought you- Okay.
I'm going to run to the restroom.
I thought we were going to let-
Can I take a five-minute break?
Wait, wait, okay, did I miss something? Do you want a break? Okay, take five. And then, I'm sorry.
I thought we were going to move public comment.
No, we skipped over that, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, we did skip over that. So, take five.
Huh?
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Okay, mics are off.
My goodness.
My goodness.
Good.
Somebody's got to do minutes.
All right, I keep you hanging on.
Oh, I don't know.
If you're advertising a public meeting, you got to do minutes.
So, I didn't just, this was distributed, or they sitting on the, this is distributed?
You just laying around here.
Was it laying on the desk, or did I just bring?
He must have brought it.
Really? Yeah. So, I had asked that, you know, somebody's going to reuse this, somebody made copies or whatever, but
They already have some.
Yeah, but that's not the one I rewrote today. The one I sent around earlier. I revised.
I understand, but we're in agreement by the end of the...
We have a copy of... Oh, is that ready? That's okay.
Pardon?
Oh, no, there was nothing here when we...
We got two, uh... That's good.
Yeah.
That's great. Maybe they'll do it again next year. Okay? Wonderful.
Could be approved.
Yeah.
I don't like it either, but I'm just doing...
Okay. Okay. All right, good to see you. Do you have a showing? Okay, all right, bye.
What's the meeting?
Uh, the outside agency, apparently we have to...
I know.
But I, I understand it, that's fine.
Yeah.
Getting three people together for that. Guys, we can start gathering again?
Mics are on.
Thank you.
Wow, nightmare, I'm surrounded by paper.
Mayor, you have a script for this and
Oh, yeah.
You read the, the first box, and then you go like two pages back and then start there.
Okay, we're on record again?
No, not yet, just...
I'm sorry, and then start on what?
Well, there's like a box in the
Right.
And then you read this box, and then you skip to where it says, start here.
Okay. Need more pictures, put more pictures in there. I know it, I know it. It doesn't say start here.
It doesn't say start here.
It says, read this section.
No. I'll put a little traffic light there with
You should, don't, don't think it wouldn't be helpful. I don't know what you're talking about. Okay, I'm going to do the first box.
He did this actually.
Right?
Right.
There, read this section, that's why I said, okay.
I think so.
Start here.
Big fan of color coding.
I got it. A green one.
I'm still waiting for the okey-dokey.
And the recorder.
I must mean different things in different language.
You have sergeant-at-arms around people. Kathy coming this way.
Yep.
There she is. All right, thank you, welcome back. It's now eight oh six PM, the public hearing for file CPA two zero one seven, two, two zero one seven oh two is now open to allow public comment regarding adoption of the 2017 Economic Opportunities Analysis and Housing Needs Analysis, which includes an updated buildable lands inventory. If adopted, this document will become part of the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan and will recommend new goals and policies for the housing and economy chapters of the Comprehensive Plan. Council packing includes the draft final ordinance and findings following the public hearing and deliberations. Council may decide tonight to adopt the ordinance as presented or amended. The planning, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter earlier this month and has forwarded a recommendation as outlined in staff council's communication. The city council's role in this legislative process is to consider any written and oral testimony as well as the Planning Commission's recommendations and information from staff and make a final decision as to ordinance amendments. Council may adopt the Planning Commission recommendations or may, may take other action including taking no action. Council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters or required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare conflict of interest in this matter? The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to this criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. A brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the council members have questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly in the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have any written testimony to submit in the record, please provide to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, as you know, we, with, with financial assistance from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, we retained a consultant to prepare a buildable lands inventory, housing needs assess, housing needs assessment, and economic opportunities analysis. They completed their work, prepared a report, and suggested some draft policies for housing and for the economy to replace the existing ones in our current comprehensive plan. And they are, those are in the, the draft ordinance that you have. The ordinance also would adopt the document, the report that they produced as a resource for the comprehensive plan. Looking first at the buildable lands inventory, the, the rules under which that is conducted, you, the idea is looking at all the land you have in the city, what, what parts of it are buildable, or, and which, what parts are overly constrained so they effectively are unbuildable. So, the minimum requirements are to exclude, you can exclude properties with slopes over twenty-five percent, properties that are in the floodway. And the floodway is, when you have a flood, there's the water spreads out, you know, rises up and spreads out, that's over the floodplain, the weather, the main water is flowing, that's the floodway. And you'll see later, there's actually a relatively small area of floodway in the city. And there's also the hundred-year floodplain that could be excluded, where we don't allow to, where a community does not allow development, we do allow development in the floodplain here. Other hazard areas and goal five resource protection. Goal fives are, resources are the significant wetlands, significant riparian areas, significant aesthetic resources, and aggregate sites. We don't have aggregate sites in the city, but we do have the others. What, we've looked at, consultants looked at it, were the steep slopes, the floodway, floodplain, significant riparian and wetlands, and then some other data, looking at open water, wetlands in general, streams, and the tsunami evacuation zone. Did, I should specify, they did not say, the buildable lands inventory does not consider the tsunami evacuation zone by itself to be unbuildable. Parts of that are significant wetlands or whatever, so it would be unbuildable in that sense, but does not exclude development in the tsunami evacuation zone. So, they went through and, and mapped the areas, I'm just going to go through these really quickly, you got them in the report, slopes over twenty-five percent, you can see in the orange, there are areas, and the purple outline, or the violet outline, is the urban growth boundary. Then the floodway, and you can see within this, within the urban growth boundary and the city limits, the only area of floodway is down here along Schooner Creek, southern And the hundred-year floodplain, these are areas that would be expected to be flooded in a hundred-year storm. Significant riparian areas, there are some areas, you can see them along the lake, some over here, along the southern part here, and then along here, along Agnes Creek, in the city on the wetland, or, open space. Then there's significant wetlands here in purple, and this big one up here is State Park, as is this one over here on the other side of the river. Most of the other wetland area along here actually is the city open space. The wetland down here is owned by the city that's adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. This wetland down here in Cutler City area is owned by the county. Open water is the lake and the ocean, then streams, just add a little bit in blue, and wetlands in general, beyond just the significant wetlands, but all wetlands, and the evacuation zones, just for information. So, what they did in their analysis was to include the slopes over twenty-five percent, the floodway, the open water, the significant riparian, and significant wetlands areas, and the hundred-year floodplain, assumed that half of it would be developable, and wetlands, they put a twenty-five-foot buffer around the wetlands, and that does not mean there is a twenty-five-foot buffer around wetlands for, for development, it's just for the purposes of this analysis. Same thing for streams, we're just estimating that normally you'd set back twenty-five feet from a stream. Again, that's not a ordinance requirement, it's a being conservative in the buildable lands inventory, and by being conservative, I mean we exclude more land than you might, than might actually be, be the reality, just to make sure that even with, that we exclude that land, that there's still enough left to meet our twenty-year supply. So, then there was more analysis looking at, at lands of various categories of vacant land, and vacant was, is a lot with improvement of ten thousand dollars or less. Partially vacant is a lot with a, with an improvement of ten, of more than ten thousand dollars, but it could be further divided and further developed. And, and developed land has a, a improvement value of ten thousand dollars and above and can't be subdivided, land under public ownership and so on. And undevelopable was, is land that can't be developed under the current zoning or is more than ninety percent constrained. If I constrain, that's the steep slopes and so on. So they looked at also existing land use, existing zoning, and then a number of steps, just started figuring what, what properties could be developed or not, and going through and just through several steps, coming up with redevelopable land, looking at additional limitations. The bottom line is that, within the urban growth boundary, there's two thousand and eighty-four lots that are developable, totaling one thousand three hundred and thirteen acres for both residential and employment lands. So that begs the question, what do we need for residential and for employment lands? And that's where we got into the economic opportunities analysis and the housing needs assessment. The economic opportunities analysis started with sort of a building on the, the business gap analysis that Urban Renewal did, but also looking at where it looks like there's real opportunities based on, on what's here and what's projected here. At the bottom of this list, for example, it says arts, entertainment, and recreation. They did an analysis that showed, we have a much greater concentration of uses in, of that category than you would expect for a community of our size. So maybe that's something we want to build on. The main reason we have that, I think, is because of the casino, but it may just be something we want to build on, especially given, given that we have a tourist economy here. And I have several other categories. The, the third one down, artisan makers, that's not, it's not the same thing as saying artist, that's the small entrepreneurial person that manufactures something, it might be, you know, one or two-person, or a two, three or four-person shop, that's doing something. We have a few examples of that, where there's, you know, there's a small shop, but they're doing something for a nationwide company, they're just able to produce that, what they Then they, in order to determine what the land need for employment is, they made three sets of assumptions. The first just was that things keep going the way they have been going, and employment grows the same rate as the population, which is eighty-five point oh eight five, no, zero point eight five percent, less than one percent a year. Scenario B looks at the Oregon Employment Department's ten-year job growth, out twenty years, and assumes that we catch fifty percent of the retail outflow. That was one of the things that they recognized, that we have substantial amount of retail outflow. That's why they, in these business types, it was looking at maybe there are some, some things that we can do that would capture some of that retail outflow, that's where people go somewhere else to do their shopping. And then scenario C assumes that, it's sort of the maximum scenario, it takes the, whatever the highest is of either the other two scenarios, and assumes that's what, what is needed. So the, the job growth, total looking at over the next So the, the job growth total, looking at over the next 20 years, it was 1,567 to 1,730 jobs total, which would be expected over the next 20 years. And then the, the land that would be needed, and there's, actually, there's a mistake in this chart. This figure where it says eight in the upper right corner actually should be the 6.9, but the totals are, are right. So this is how much land do we need for each of the scenarios for employment land, and the maximum would be 52 acres. So we have a supply of 188 acres. So we have plenty of land for employment.
That puts you on the spot, but could you define industrial for me?
Industrial?
Uh-huh.
It is, there's, there's several kinds. It's manufacturing, service to, like warehousing, that kind of, where it would be serviced to retail companies and that kind of thing. It's pretty broad. If you think of all the different, it could be storage, warehousing, distribution, some manufacturing, repair, especially heavier repairs that are, they may be noisy, or smoky, or whatever.
Yeah, that's, I kind of just wanted you to bring that up, that the idea that we're not gonna put all these factories in and choke off people.
Right.
Many different things.
Yeah, there's, we're not saying there's gonna be chromium refineries, or that kind of thing. It's, and most of what we allow in the zoning ordinance, people would think of as light industrial. So as I said, we, we have a need for a maximum of 52 acres, have a supply of 188 acres. So we have sufficient employment lands within the city. Some of it is not served by water and sewer, but that's not the issue on this, it's, it's, do we have the land? The answer is yes. Then we also have redevelopable land, which is land that's being under, it's being used, but it's underutilized, and we have another 100, almost 122 acres of that. So again, that just increases the, the amount of excess that we have, I guess, so we've got, we've got, we have plenty of land there. For housing land, we looked at several scenarios, and the baseline forecast was, was just, again, just keep going the way we're, the way we are. And the need for, for 20 years, it was, was for 206 acres. We need 1,484 dwelling units, which can be accommodated on 206 acres. Then there was, the, the second scenario was where there's more emphasis on workforce housing. The, when it's, the idea, or the, the way that's defined is that there's more multifamily, more lower cost, more density, so actually you need less land for more, for the workforce housing emphasis. Yeah, but, but you do have a need, it also talks about having more, a need for more dwelling units, 1,814, toward a need for 248, almost 249 acres. Our supply was 1,124 and a half acres, so again, we have abundant land for housing over the next 20 years, more than enough.
Richard, there's no crossover in, in all that acreage between the?
No, no, it's not, it's, it would be land that has the proper zoning, so.
Significant.
Yeah. And remember, that includes the east side of the lake. The part of the village is the cascade that we own, and part of the village is the cascade head that we don't own. And a lot of infill land, there's a lot of land in the Nelscott Gap area in particular, you see a little bit in here where it looks like there'll be a lot of, a lot of potential for development in there. So we had the, the scenarios, a third scenario was, was increasing the density, doing more intensive development on land that's already developed. And then a fourth one that we added was to de-emphasize development in the tsunami hazard zone, and focus land outside that area. In the present trends, essentially, again, it was 1,848 new units would be needed, and the others, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 1,484, and then in the present trend scenario, 1,814 in the other scenarios. Just, again, looking at the different things, different variables in, in their analysis, and more of them, and then looking at the percentage of the new housing units that would need to be affordable, and you can see with the, the workforce housing emphasis, we increased it, we're pretty constant, the other three of 26, 27 percent. In the workforce housing scenario, it would be 35 percent. With much more multifamily, you see 30 percent, 30 percent multifamily versus 5 to 9 percent multifamily in the other scenarios. And then second homes, the different percentages, basically, and these are just assumptions to get these, get this analysis done, it gives a range of possibilities. And then the amount of, of land that would need to be used. And actually, in this one, they've, they've used, it's called a heat analysis, on where development of both kinds is expected to occur. And you can see there are some differences in the scenarios, depending on what the assumptions are. But with, in, in all of them, you see, in the area around Logan Road and 101 up here, and then, and the Nelscott Gap area down here, you see where there's, where you expect to see more intensive new development than in elsewhere in the city. Principally because there's land there that can be developed, and also economic, especially in the, around the Logan Road area, economic reasons to be there. You can also see some more heat going into the Villages Cascade Head property in, in the other two scenarios. So that's how they got to where they got. And then they, look like you have a question.
Well, I don't know if it's appropriate now or later, I just, when we're looking at those maps, I, I, you know, if we talk about increasing development in the south end of housing, everyone's still gonna have to travel north for the services.
Right.
Unless we start thinking about, you know, are we gonna have another grocery store, some more restaurants, and the like, at the south end, I think we're just causing bigger traffic problems.
Right. And you can see in, in all four of them, down, down here in the Nelscott area, there, where you would see more development there. And you know, the, the Nelscott Gap Plan calls for, in the Nelscott Gap, for mixed development in there, retail, as well as residential.
The gas station, perhaps?
Perhaps.
[laughing]
You know, we, we do have areas where gas stations are allowed, and we do have areas where they're not.
Because we want to pretend we don't have cars that need gas, I mean.
No, I don't, I don't think we do pretend that. I think we have areas where gas stations are allowed, and we have plenty of gas stations. I don't know that we have a shortage of gas stations. People haven't been coming in and asking for gas stations. I know there was one retailer that was looking for, possibly doing a gas station, decided, it was a non-gas retailer, but decided that other retailers, other gasoline retailers would handle their problems for, or would handle the demand for them, so they didn't do it. So anyway, they also gave us some very substantial draft policies for housing and for the economy. In the, and I'm sorry, this is so busy, but in the existing comprehensive plan, this is the entirety of the housing policies. And it's really very undetailed and, and pretty minimal, I guess, in, in, in what, what the comprehensive plan says should be done. Then similarly, for the economy, it's very minimal, again, undetailed. They do, they say periodically analyze the commercially industrially zoned land, that's what the Buildable Lands Inventory and Economic Opportunities Analysis does. We did, I did this in 2006, we're doing it again now with, with this current study. So there's, in, in the, in the draft ordinance, we have all of the policies that the Gesales suggested putting in, and that was, that went through review by the, the committee on, on this study. I've got them all in here, I don't know if you, if you have comments or concerns about any of them in particular. If, like the first said, is on land availability, I can ask, does anybody have any questions or concerns about those? And that's in your packet, if you're, the online packet, that begins, begins on page 204 of the packet. I know, I, I know when we did the workshop, someone suggested that we'll, we'll need to take a close look at these. I, I don't want to go read them all, I know we have plenty of other action tonight, too. So if you want to just stop me as I go through here, and so I'll keep going, and planning?
But, hang on a second, sir.
I just had one question. In your staff report, you mentioned that the Planning Commission unanimously recommended that we adopt the proposed ordinance with an amendment, and I didn't catch what, what amendment they wanted.
Oh, boy. I'm trying to, I don't have the staff report in front of me.
Well, I've got the minutes, and I still couldn't figure out what amendment they wanted.
I, I don't, I'm not recalling amendment, that may be the result of cutting and pasting on that, I'm not sure, but.
Because I sure don't see any motion for an amendment.
Okay.
In the minutes.
The only one I remember them amending was the chicken one.
Yeah, okay. Right. Thank you.
Anything on land availability? Planning, coordinate economic development efforts with local and regional partners?
I have something. On, on planning, on number two, where it says, prepare a five-year economic development strategy. I like that idea, it's, but I'm curious, could we also have a 10-year strategy, looking a little bit further ahead? Five is a short amount of time when you're talking about planning, and it wouldn't have to be as detailed, but just kind of a projection of?
I think, I think the idea here was that it not be, not be long-term, it's doing something, basically, it's taking action now.
But it'd be good to have like, five years, we're gonna get all this done in five years, or these things are gonna change?
Well, it's what we're gonna do, it's not that we're gonna get all this stuff done in five years, but in the next five years, this is what we're gonna do. Be focused, really, action-oriented, focused, as opposed to.
And how would, having also a 10-year one, which wouldn't have as much detail, how would that change what you're doing in the five years? I mean, I don't see, why, I mean, I don't see the impact on five years. Why not have also a 10-year, just kind of look ahead?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not hearing, I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, number two is talking about a five-year economic develop, development strategy and action plan, which I think is excellent, I can't wait to see it. But I'm saying, why not then also have a 10-year that's not as detailed, but just to give us some idea of what, of what you see in that next five-year period?
It could be done, or it could be, yeah, it could be essentially as part of the five-year plans, and by the way, this is what's coming up in the next five years, or something, again, again, with less, less detail. And of course, the whole, just, all these things are about what happens over the next 20 years. And then, this is just trying to focus more, I guess, more immediately in, in the first five years, but there's no reason why that couldn't be done, if that's, if you want to, want to amend this to have that, then that's fine.
I would not be in favor of that at this point, I would just like to see if a five-year strategy could be developed in the first place, and what that looks like, and then we could talk about, okay, you did this, would have benefited us further down the road. I'd love, I'd love to see something happen first.
Yeah, I mean, I, information is great, and then where's our plan, absolutely.
So, okay, carry on.
And more, more planning, and.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you go back, just previously, I did have a question. Create an economic development team, is this gonna be, we're not hiring somebody new, we're just gonna kind of have little meetings here and there?
No. No, it'd be certain, certain members of staff who have economic development responsibilities, planning staff, urban renewal, VCB, and then, and possibly others, and.
How do we bring in someone who wants to start a business here? If we say, and please forgive me if I'm picking one business, I'm just gonna say, because restaurant business, if there was a cash and carry, how do we go about getting them to come to Lincoln City? How do we approach these people? How do we approach Costco? How do we say, we want to work with you? How does that happen?
Let me answer that with a question.
Okay.
Are they approaching us, or are we trying to go find them?
Let's, let's talk about this plan here, we're going to find, we're saying, we want these things to happen here, so obviously, we're going out for them, so let's start from there. Who does that? Who makes that phone call?
Right now, right now, the person that we have assigned to lead on this is Allison Robertson.
Okay.
And she, she goes about it through putting out feelers, finding out the contacts, identifying the possible industries that may be industry, who the players are on that. One resource that we have been talking with is the state, state officials. Often, people will be contacting, companies will be contacting the state, saying, we're interested in coming in, it's just having those, it's finding those, it's networking, it's finding the individuals that, of the industries, and then going af, and then going, speaking with them, finding out what plans are.
Okay, but I guess, back to my question, if I said today, I would love to have a Costco here, Ron, call somebody. Is that what happens? Oh, you're gonna say Allison, call somebody?
In a nutshell, yes, but it's more complicated than that, but yes, in a nutshell, that's it.
But that's what I'm concerned about with plans, and, and, and we, I suppose it'd be great, nobody's assigned a job, nobody says, this is the person who's gonna pick up that phone, or this is the person who's gonna meet these people who want to talk to them, and that's, that's all I'm gonna see.
Yeah, in, in our case, and currently, the assignment would fall to Allison Robertson.
Okay. We're watching Allison.
She's still back there.
Okay, thank you.
And then new businesses, encourage businesses that provide family wage jobs in Lincoln City. Any comments on these? Local businesses, support the success and growth of existing businesses and entrepreneurs.
I have one. I have one. On number one, your suggestion, I mean, your idea there is design standards, it's in parentheses. Could we add signs? Can we talk about signage? Or is that not appropriate in here?
Don't mean?
Maybe I'm reading this wrong. I just would like, at some point, to talk about signage, in a big way.
As in sign recommendations, or as wayfinding signs?
Not wayfinding signs, although I'd be interested in that, too, but...
Advertising.
I can tell you that one of the, one of our next projects in the planning department, once we get through this, this group of things, is the sign ordinance. It needs substantial revision, and it's a high priority for us.
Within this, where do we communicate a business's responsibility to maintain a, an attractive business? Where do we approach, how do we approach that to say, your place looks pretty junky, you need to fix it?
We do have a, an exterior property maintenance requirement in the, in the code now. I don't know how much of a priority that is for the code enforcement officer. There have been some properties where there's been maintenance issues, and I've contacted the property owner, and you get reactions, everything from, you know, I realize that I'll take care of it right away, to mind your own business.
Because it would seem to me that would be an important component, because if we're going to say, come to Lincoln City, we're going to give you money to help maintain it, someone puts all that money into getting something nice, and the guy next door lets it run down to an unacceptable level, and the city's not, you know, giving the stick to them, to say, you need to move this, or the carrot, as it would be, I don't know that that's going to do much good.
Mm-hmm.
So that's all I'm saying, is I'd sure love to see a little more enforcement component, strengthening. Just a thought. Thanks.
Tourism industry, foster Lincoln City's recreational tourism-based economy. Community needs, support businesses that provide for the day-to-day needs of Lincoln City residents, including with now limited, limited to growing population of retirees.
Do you think we'll ever have that opportunity in the hospital?
I think what?
To be able to service an elderly community with, with the growth of our hospital. And I'm going to give a perfect example of my mom, when, when, you know, the last years of her life, she had to be near OHSU for the cardiac specialty there. Will we ever, and I hear that from a lot of people here, I'd like to be here, but I don't have the service.
Our hospital is a critical access hospital, it's basically for things like cardiac issues, it can stabilize you...
Right.
And then send you to an appropriate facility for, to get major work done.
Right.
We do have surgical capability and so on, but for the really, really serious stuff, I think the idea is to send them to Corvallis, or Salem, or...
Right, but see, that's, that's another thing, when I look at, okay, we're going to say, we want to attract retirees, and that, you know, I'm getting near that age, where I'm taking medical, how am I going to access medical care? And that needs to be a component of this.
Yeah, but, one of the big problems is, is having the, the population to support the need for particular kinds of physicians, and, yeah, there's, to the extent, there's apple and orange, or not apple, but chicken and egg.
Chicken and egg, yeah.
But, you know, it's, it's a small hospital, and provides a lot of, a wide variety of services.
Not knocking them, no, they do a great job.
And we are going to be getting a new hospital, which will have provision for possible expansion. In other words, it's, it will be built with the idea that it can be added on to as the deeper...
Again, I just think it needs to be recognized that if we're going to attract this population, we have to attract the support around them, not just someone that provides beds and wheelchairs.
Right.
Yeah.
And another thing we need is, is assisted living, the more intermediate care kind of things, nursing homes, we, you know, there's, I think there's a strong and probably growing need for these things.
Yeah, I'd love to see a transitional community here.
Yeah. The Dorchester House was, did have more, not really assisted living, but close to that, but they decided that was not a viable option for them anymore, their parent decided that wasn't, and we lost a nursing home over by the hospital, for whatever reason, I don't know, but, you know, you do see people, when they reach a certain point in their health, in their well-being, a lot of times, you know, they do end up leaving to be closer to medical care, yeah.
Is this, is this an opportunity that we could stick Allison on?
We could what?
We could get Allison to go find us some...
We're going to load your plate, Allison. Give you lots of stuff to do.
I'm on the board of the hospital, so...
Well, I was talking, I was just referring to assisted living, the three levels of independent living, assisted living, and acute care, that you need when you're an older person, and that's a business.
Yeah.
My mother's in one. It's a business.
I know over the years, people, various assisted living, people have looked at the area, and for whatever reason, have decided not to come.
Well, let's ask again.
And I'm just as guilty, keep that, I'm sorry, I was looking at the clock, and we should probably get rolling here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is this, just for, you know, for fun, these aren't in the order of importance, are they? We have tourism before community?
No, these are not in any order of importance.
Okay.
They're just in an order. And workforce development policies towards encouraging development of a local workforce with the skills that the local businesses need. And providing infrastructure to support employment growth. That's it for economic development, for the economy.
What specifically did you mean by using Devil's Lake for transportation purposes?
Devil's Lake for transportation purposes.
Correct.
What about it now?
What do you mean?
Um, that's a good question.
We're going to have a ferry from Regatta to the other side?
It's possible, you know, it's the idea of just thinking of different transportation options for people. I mean, it could be, like, tourists might enjoy that as a way of getting around town a little bit in a different way, that sort of thing. And turning to housing from economic, from the economy, look at the housing goals, provide a sufficient quantity and variety of housing to meet community needs, and then there's several policies under that. And nothing.
Well, and I don't know if we can put it in here, but you've done it once already, I think, maybe more, where you've met with builders, and talked about the limitations that the city might be putting on them, and I continually hear from builders and developers about, hey, I ran into this, I ran into that, and the city wasn't so helpful, and I just want to make sure that we have something that says, I don't even know how to put this right, I just want to make sure that we're always reexamining ourselves, to say, are we doing the best we can do to encourage development?
Okay, yeah. You know, we do have different things in here, like the second one about expedited and review, expedited review and permitting for residential properties that meet certain criteria of unaffordability and so on. But I, I think in general, what you're saying makes a lot of sense, and we do try to do that, you know, there's, I'm sure there's always room for improvement.
Before you leave that page, number four on the list, in the packet, I don't know if it's the same, under housing affordability, consider applying system development charges on a square foot or fixture count basis.
Right.
So smaller homes pay less than larger. I really like that idea, I just wanted to...
Yeah, that's something that actually we've been looking at for some time, and I think that in planning and public works, I think we're on the same page on this, and I know that Newport is, is going that route, I think, on a square footage basis, and I think it makes a lot of sense.
I have a second comment on here, which is number seven. It's about parking, and consider setting parking requirements to the minimum standard. I'm not sure exactly what the minimum standard is, but I'll sing my same song, which is, around here, we need adequate parking for the way in which we get around until we have a lot of other types of transportation options, and so I, for one, wouldn't be ready to lower the number of parking per unit.
Remember, this is about housing.
Exactly.
Okay. We just want to make sure we're not requiring too much parking.
Oh, never. Takes a long time to get from one end of town to the other, and it's in a car.
Encourages to keep going.
Whole lot of things under housing affordability here. Housing funds, regulations, special needs.
I have a question, Mr. Townsend. On number six, page eight, notify potential buyers and developers. Who, who's going to notify them? The city, the, when they come in to apply for license, or, I just wasn't clear, the realtor?
Number six, page eight, which, which number six?
Notify potential buyers and developers about risk of tsunami, flooding, and other potential hazards. Who, who does that? Who's the notify? Is that the city? I mean, I just wasn't clear, who, who notifies?
Oh, about notifying the buyers and so on.
Yeah.
That's, if asked, we, we tell people, and if, if someone's coming in, asking us about a particular piece of property, we go through the whole list of things, whether it's got geologic hazards, whether it's in a tsunami zone, what this, obviously, what the zoning is, and that sort of thing.
That's if they ask. What, what if they come in and talk about a property, will you automatically then tell them all these things, or do we have to ask specifically?
Well, what I'm saying, if somebody says something about buying this property...
Okay.
And either you're doing their due diligence, we go into all of that.
Okay. That's all?
This is just a duplication, I forgot to take out. That's, completes the staff report.
Any questions that we haven't asked? Okay. Thank you, Richard. Now's the time for public comment and testimony, and let's see where I'm at. I think I went through, Patrick, were you up for this one?
Yeah.
Jeffrey, you still here? Jeffrey Evans? And was that going to be on this one, too? You've got VRD written down, I'm sure. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor Williams, member of Lincoln City, City Council. My name is Patrick Wingard. I'm the North Coast Regional Representative for the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, 4301 Third Street in Tillamook. Really pleased to be here tonight, and I will be brief. Here to speak in support of the proposed Economic Opportunities Analysis, Housing Needs Assessment, and Buildable Lands Inventory, both the plan documents and the associated plan amendments. These planning documents and economic development and housing plan policies reflect the economic history of Lincoln City, changes affecting those traditions, and new opportunities for economic development. In regards to housing, your, the objectives, the goals laid out in the proposed amendments and in the plan reflect your housing strengths, challenges, and opportunities. The Projects Advisory Committee meetings, of which I was able to attend, I believe all but one, very well-attended, engaged a, a wide range, a broad spectrum of your economic development and housing interests and stakeholders, as well as members of the public. Did a really nice job. The plan documents before you tonight are well-crafted and consistent with the housing and economic development elements of the statewide planning goals and requirements of the applicable Oregon administrative rules. Your adoption of these plan amendments will provide the city a strong foundation as you continue to move forward to execute and advance local economic development and housing projects and planning initiatives. Nice work. Okay, I got like a minute left. I want to, I have an opportunity here to speak to a couple of the comments that have come up, really, really good comments. I wanted to start out by saying that I advocated for you for this project. My colleagues in Salem only wanted to fund the economic development piece, and I live in Astoria, I've been on the North Coast for 20 years, and I said, with Richard's help and Deborah's help, your staff's help, that's not going to work in Lincoln City. You cannot have an economic development plan and a strategy without addressing housing. So I appreciate your staff's support and helping my management team and the grant managers see fit to fund this entire project. Now, the loser, if you will, in that conversation was the City of Astoria. They were second to get a, with a similar ask. However, we were able to come up with the very last coastal management program grant to provide to the City of Astoria funding for a five-year economic development action strategy and plan. I'll make sure to get that plan. They just finished it up, it's really good, and it could provide you a template, because I know you'd mentioned the five-year action strategy. In regards to the 10-year look, I would offer that even though this is a 20-year economic development plan, as Richard and you know, the last time you took a look at your economic development policies was in '06, 10 years is kind of the, the time to go back and take a look at this 20-year plan, so maybe that's something to, to think about. Target industries, it's really an important part of your economic development strategy and your plan to identify target industries. So take a look at page 18 of the plan, and you'll see healthcare services, continuing care facilities, and general retail, and in, within general retail, a, a comment, a statement about your 60,000-square-foot maximum cap on retail industry. So, you know, there in your target industries gives you an opportunity to, you know, speak to some of the opportunities, whether it's through rezoning, or plan developments, or mixed use, or, it, it just, it gives you that foothold to maybe take to the next level, advancing opportunities that are reflected in your target industries. That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Patrick. Thanks for advocating for us.
You bet.
And I think that was it for the sign-ups. Anyone who wanted to speak on this, who didn't sign up? Seeing no one. Comments from representatives of public agencies? If there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I move to close the public record. I'll second.
Motion second, discussion?
Close the record, or the hearing and the record?
I thought I heard public, is it a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
Hearing and record.
And you're second for that?
Yes.
Okay. Move and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I wanted to add, what I'm at, what we're looking for tonight is just, is not the adoption of the ordinance, but the direction to bring back an ordinance with findings and conclusions at the next meeting.
Do you have the head nod, or do you need a motion? Need a motion? Okay, so, need a motion to direct staff to bring back the ordinance?
I, I saw move.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Richard. Oh, we're onto another one, it's only nine o'clock. Okay, we're at 2017, okay. Public hearing to accept public comment on zoning ordinance amendments to allow temporary uses, planning file ZO8201701. It is now 8:58 PM. The public hearing for file ZO8201701 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in Chapter 17.52 supplementary regulations and exceptions, adding Section 17.52.280, temporary uses. Temporary use is defined as a special or unique use permitted for a limited duration in a specified time period. The ordinance authorizes the city council to allow temporary uses when they are of citywide significance, and the planning director to allow temporary uses on specific properties when standards are met. The city council packet includes a draft final ordinance and findings. Following the public hearing and deliberations, council may decide... and the planning director to allow temporary uses on specific properties when standards are met. The city council packet includes a draft final ordinance and findings. Following the public hearing and deliberations, council may decide tonight to adopt the resolution... Excuse me. Adopt the ordinance as presented or amended. If the ordinance is adopted, there's also a resolution on the agenda to declare temporary uses that will be allowed during the August solar eclipse. Did the planning commission hear that? Did they do this one, too? The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter?
Yes.
Okay, great. Earlier this month, and has forwarded recommendations outlined in staff's council communication. The city council's role in this legislative process is to consider any written or oral testimony, as well as the planning commission's recommendation and information from staff to make a final decision as to ordinance amendments. Council may adopt the planning commission recommendations or may take other action, including no action. The council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? I had mentioned, I think... I'm not going to speak for everyone, but I'll say I have a potential conflict, because I do have land that could be made available for use. So I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in on that, but if you have a place that you could rent, that you could...
Think you also have a retail business?
Yeah. I would like to say that I sell things, and I could have somebody rent a room. So, I mean, I have a potential there, too.
Well, I think... Well, it doesn't mean that you're excluded. We're not saying actual. We have... Because we talked to Mr. Apicello about it, and because we're going to be in a class. I mean, it affects everybody, so it's not... It's not going to be an actual. So if you have... I think we all have a potential.
I guess they have a yard that they could do.
Yeah, I think we all have a potential to rent a room. We all have a potential to let someone use our yard, so I think... Yeah.
So would that conflict be for the resolution, or would it be for the ordinance?
It's to discuss the temporary uses. Because you have a potential conflict, so if you're going to... You have... You could influence this one way or the other towards yourself.
I see.
So you just need to say something, and that's it. I think we're good.
You've gone through the whole...
Oh, did I go through it? Okay, yeah, sorry. Conflict of interest, the substantive criteria that apply to this hearing... No, I don't have to read that part. Statewide planning goals and all that? Do you want? Okay, the substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria and to other criteria you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I'd like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. A brochure outlining these procedures is in the entrance to council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for three minutes. I need to be stuffed. If council members have questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly in the microphone by stating your name only. If you have written testimony submitted in the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present his report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little preliminary matter relating to this and the multitude of other hearings we have tonight. Typically, in the past, what we've done when we have a whole bunch of little things is put them into one ordinance. The reason we do this, we have to send notice to every property owner about potential effects on their property. When we send out a citywide notice, it costs about $4,000, so we try to put as much into one as we can. In the past, typically what we've done is put it all into one ordinance. There was some concern, I guess, about how confusing that can be, where you can have an ordinance with several unrelated things in it. So what we've done this time is have several individual ordinances to avoid that confusion. In this particular case, we were able to conserve some of the confusion, because what we've given you in the packet was an ordinance from... That I had drafted. Another related or similar ordinance that Mr. Apicello had drafted, actually just the only difference being that it had an emergency clause in it. At your seat tonight is a third version of the ordinance, which is what we want to focus on tonight. The third version of the ordinance and a new version of the resolution as well. The main thing is that what the... This newest version of the ordinance does, it includes in the ordinance the universe of possible temporary uses that could be allowed at any time. The other major difference is it takes out the part that says the planning director can approve a temporary use for a particular lot, which we can... We'll come back to that some other time. But we wanted to make sure that this piece, or about the city council can make a finding of statewide... Or citywide significance, and get that in place in time to deal with the eclipse issues. So we're trying to take out one potential area of controversy, one thing that really isn't an emergency in the sense that word is used in legislation, and just limit it to the city council's authority to approve temporary uses. And again, specifying in the ordinance what that range of temporary uses could be. What we're talking about, again, is special or unique uses, not run-of-the-mill stuff that someone just wants to use their property in a way that ordinarily isn't allowed or might be allowed in another zone.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question, I guess, for our city attorney. If this isn't the version that was noticed, can we hold the hearing?
You... Though it is contemplated that things will change during the hearing. So you had an ordinance notice that said, for example, the council can make a finding of citywide significance and do certain actions relieve people of certain land use constraints, and that was in an associated resolution. This is essentially taking the resolution items and placing them in the ordinance. So I don't think it's wrong to say if you can't change it at all. Is... The test is whether or not it's substantially... Has it changed so substantially that it didn't fairly apprise people of what was being considered? I had a case in Ashland where we had a challenge saying, "You changed it during the hearing after listening to the public and after listening to staff, and you changed it too much." And Luba said, "No, you can change what is proposed in the ordinance." You just... What the topic is needs to be presented in the notice. So that... I don't think it's a bright line, but I think it's fairly defensible that what this ordinance, as advertised, proposed was the council granting certain relief from city ordinances. All this modified suggestion is. And at this point, it's just a suggestion to you in terms of revisions to what's been advertised, is to refine that and further define it. So it's defensible in terms of... It's within the bounds of what was generally advertised.
Plus, actually, this ends up being narrower than what was originally in the packet. Some of the key things is that, again, it's for special kinds of uses, for a very limited duration. I think the draft ordinance you have before you limits it to no more than six days. And it relates to the uses, not the standards for uses. So like if someone says, "I want to build... I want to have a house on my property, but temporarily don't want to pave the driveway." Well, that's not a temporary use. That's a standard. You have to pave driveway. So that wouldn't be applicable. As I said, it is... We have put in a different ordinance than what you had before you, and it does remove the planning director's authority to approve special temporary uses. And that will be coming back later. It does put a list of possible temporary uses into the ordinance, which means that there wouldn't be other temporary uses that would be possible. And then there are... The resolution for the eclipse weekend has the specific uses that would be... We're suggesting be approved for the eclipse weekend. So the ordinance... Getting away from the eclipse weekend, the ordinance is of general applicability. Because the city council has... Alone has the power when you find that the use or uses are of citywide significance. Then... There's sort of... The uses that are in the ordinance are essentially the same as what's in the resolution as well. So I've sort of folded it into one thing here, so we don't go over it twice. But I'll just say, for the eclipse, the idea is it begins on Thursday before the eclipse and ends Tuesday. And it specifically does not authorize camping on beaches or on city-owned property. But both the ordinance and the resolution would allow a nightly rental, either of bedrooms or of a dwelling unit, without the B&amp;B or VRD license or an occupational tax permit. I believe there still would be a requirement to collect the transient room tax unless the property owner does not advertise and does not list it with a... With an agent.
Could you define advertise for me? If I put a sign up in my yard, is that advertising?
Is it more than two square feet?
I'm just asking. Because I understand if I put an ad in the paper, if I have a Craigslist, I clearly understand I'm advertising if I have a sign up on my property.
Interesting question. Microphone.
Okay. So pretty much if you let anyone know, even by word of mouth, that this is available...
No, I think, you know, if, you know, if your cousin calls and says, "We'd like to come and see the eclipse." He'd say, "Great, but it'll cost you..." You need to pay for the utilities, because you eat so much, so you're going to have to give us 50 bucks a night, or something like that. I don't see that. That's not advertising.
So if we solicit it in any way, we should be collecting TRTs?
We're going to have a Craigslist enforcer?
Craigslist, I would call advertising. And we do look at Craigslist. Also, it would allow parking, camping, and entry on private property. And it can also... Property owner can charge for those activities on their property without having an occupational tax permit. And street vending would be allowed.
Within the confines of what we have already, though, right? We couldn't have a truck. The standard doesn't change?
Standard doesn't... Isn't changed. The way the ordinance is written, it says... Let me get it here.
Non-motorized, four-by-eight.
We sell...
It's commercial retail sales activity exclusive of marijuana and alcohol. That could be interpreted to include food trucks. But street vendors and food trucks, of course, are subject to state and county health requirements. And we're not saying that those will be allowed on the street or on sidewalks. Now, the food carts are always allowed to be on sidewalks if they go through the process. And actually, we're not proposing that they not go through the process. They have to have, you know, the appropriate state and county licenses or permits or whatever it is. For a street vendor, they would have to get the county license as well. Or the city license. They would not have to get an OTP, no occupational tax.
Right, and that's what I want. I really want to make clear tonight to everybody, because I was approached by someone today saying, "Well, we'd just like to sell hot dogs out of our front yard." I said, "Well, that's not such a good idea, because if you make somebody sick, I want to know who did it." And you need to go to the county, and you need to get approval. This is not going to allow you to just start selling food off of your front lawn.
Right, right. And actually, our street vendors are also required to have insurance, and would the city name this as an additional insured on that? And also would allow overnight occupancy of a recreational vehicle on private property. So the way the ordinance is written, and actually, I prepared this PowerPoint before I got the new version of the ordinance. So the occupational tax permit would not be required, but insurance would still be required to the extent it's required now, and a street vendor license would be required. And then the... We don't talk... It doesn't authorize vending on sidewalks, other than what's already authorized now, which is what street vendors are allowed to do, as long as they don't block the sidewalk. And... So it's not allowing vending or camping in the streets. And the... At the planning commission discusses, and the planning commission didn't make a decision on this, but one commissioner recommended that we not allow any of these things to occur at beach accesses, so that they're open for access, especially for emergency access to the beach. So what we're asking for you to do tonight is two things. One is adopt the ordinance. And if you do that, then also adopt the resolution that goes with it. Resolution would be for the temporary uses that would be allowed for the eclipse weekend. They are... It is possible, if you don't like what's in the resolution, to change it and still adopt it, because change it by interlineation. And the reason we're asking that it be done tonight, and I would ask that it be first and second readings tonight, assuming it's unanimous, so that... And then with an emergency clause, so that it goes into effect immediately. Again, it's so that people who want to come here or want to be here and have any of these activities are able to plan with a reasonable amount of time to do that. The whole point of this is to make it so that our visitors have a more pleasant experience. That's the idea here, to try to accommodate visitors as best we can. It's not so much that... So that property owners can make a buck on the weekend, but it's so that it's to help our tourists and visitors have a reasonable experience. So it's like where we say, like with camping, allowing the camping on private property. It's not just, you know, you can throw it open and have camping. It says, "You've got to have sufficient... You've got to have off-street parking. You've got to have sanitation. You've got to have garbage service, and no campfires." So trying to put those kinds of limitations on to protect the public, but while also accommodating visitors to the extent we can.
And campfire means?
Basically, you can have a... You know, your propane stove or whatever, but I think on...
No wood, no charcoal?
Yeah, that's what I'm... I mean, I guess you could have charcoal in a grill. But that's... You know, but just a fire for the purposes of fires. Sit around and, you know, toast marshmallows or something. But that's not what we're talking about. Remember, the burn ban will be in effect.
My question about parking. I could see that one being... Because I watched it over the kite festival. All of a sudden, I'm seeing charging for parking signs going up around town. And is that going to require a business license? No. Okay, so they can advertise that?
Yes.
That's all I needed to know. Because I can see that one being taken advantage of real quickly. And would that go the same for RVs?
Yes.
That wouldn't fall under the TRT and the VRD thing? Okay. So you can advertise, "I have a space to park an RV." Okay. Go ahead, Deanna.
I have a long list.
Oh, then go ahead, Rodney.
I also have a long list.
Well, then fight it out, guys.
Absolutely.
Wow, thank you. Does this include Rhodes End?
Yes.
It's some notification that was sent out to that neighborhood. It said, "At the very b-" very bottom in little tiny, tiny words, that it does not, um, affect Rhodes End.
What did?
In the notice-
Right, right.
-that was sent out-
It said at the bottom in little tiny letters?
At the very, yeah. It said, it, I can't, I don't know what, I don't have it with me, but whatever it said, it said that Rhodes End was not affected, or this didn't include Rhodes End.
That's-
Does anybody have-
This is a letter from, uh, Ms. Walsh. I'm sorry to interrupt. It says, "When recently received, we, when recently receiving the one-page proposed zoning amendments, Z O A L one, about temporary uses, blah, 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 or at this time, uh, does not apply to properties outside the city limits, or at this time to properties in the Rhodes End neighborhood."
Rhodes End neighborhood. That's what this needs to- I don't think that's from the city, though.
Does, did anybody out there bring their notification? Could, do you mind if I get it?
That's what I read online.
Let's not take too much time, though, here. Government takes time. Yeah, I know. Yeah, you're right. I don't have children to go home to.
Okay, this is a copy of the notice that was sent out.
Okay.
And it says, "Proposed zoning and ordinance amendments will not apply to properties outside the city limits, or at this time to properties in Rhodes End neighborhood." That's what it says.
Is that specifically about the temporary uses?
No. Um, it's the whole list of all of the-
Whole list of things?
Yeah. Has temporary uses indoors-
Yeah, there's the several list of several things. You know, that's a mistake with regard to temporary uses.
But that's what was mailed out.
Right, that is.
That's what everybody has on their refrigerators, I'm sure. So, anyway.
Substantial issue, so.
Yes, so while you're noodling that one, I have a couple more. Um, I think that this has too much potential liability to property owners and potential impact and livability to adjacent residential property owners. And with that, I mean, if my neighbor, who lives in Rhodes End, by the way, um, decides that he can put ten tents in his backyard, and somehow, I don't know what he's gonna do with all the cars that go with that, that's gonna encroach on my backyard because we don't have a fence dividing us, for one thing. And also the noise. And if they have even a sterno for a little fire type of cooking, you tend, something to cook on. If that rolls away and starts a fire in the grass or in any of the vegetation, we have a big issue.
Is there a question in there?
Well, I just, I'm, I think, I don't know, I think it's a big, big question, but, um, and, um-
Because that'd be, I, all I'm saying is just want to separate deliberation from questions of staff.
Yes. I appreciate that, because I am getting into that part, so. Okay, that's my question, I guess, about Rhodes End.
Counselor Hoagland?
Who is going to enforce all these wonderful rules?
Actually, what we're doing is, what you say, well, which rules? What we're really doing is loosening up the rules, so.
How are you going to protect, you know, the residents? How are you gonna say, "You, this person has permission to stay in the night, you know, to, to camp in this yard"? I mean, are we assuming that every single house is going to be rented first? And then two, how do you determine whether or not they have permission to stay in this house? Um, and just how do you enforce no, no campfires, no sales on, on, unprotect, you know, unlicensed street vendors? How are you gonna catch the guy selling hot dogs in a shopping cart going down Highway one oh one? I don't know how all of those things that, you know, we're saying, you know, "Uh, you can do it if you have this, but not if you have that." How are you gonna enforce that?
Well, the, like, the street vendors have to have their license posted.
I understand.
All right? So, so to the extent that we have code enforcement in town and we, and the code enforcement officer will be on duty on the weekend, that'll be his job to, to do that kind of thing. Um, as far as trespassing on other people's property, that's principally the responsibility of the property owner. If they have a problem with it, they notify the police that there's trespassers. Um, we expect where there, probably where there are actual violations, not just, like, if we, if we allow camping, then that's not a violation.
Right.
So we, we, we're hoping to not get so many calls about camping-
Right.
-to, to the, to the, uh, police department. Um, but where there's other problems, I would expect them to contact the police department. They will have their hands full, there's no question of that. Um-
Okay.
To the extent it's, it's a significant problem, I imagine they will respond.
Right. I trust you, man.
Yeah. You know, a, a lot of this is, much of this is gonna happen no matter what we do.
I understand. I live here.
And, and we're trying to, to put, uh, uh, express limits where we need to, like, on the, on the street vending, and authorization in, in other areas to, again, to accommodate, uh, people, but also, um, try to keep some reasonable level of, of control on things. If, if there's fires and so on, I would imagine, uh, concerned people will contact either the, the fire department or the police department about that. And, you know, as far as, like, your barbecue rolling down the hill, everybody, anybody that has a barbecue, that can happen to anybody.
And then lastly, the need to declare an emergency is that, to allow all these exceptions?
No, it's to have it go into effect immediately so that people can plan for what they're gonna do over, over that weekend.
Can you explain that again? I don't understand the need to declare an emergency so that people can plan.
If there isn't an emerg, if emergency isn't, isn't declared and go into effect immediately, let's say you do, you do the first and second reading tonight, then ad, then adopt the resolution that goes into effect immediately. So in a little bit less than two months, the, um, the eclipse will occur. So over that two-month period, people that wanna advertise can advertise, the people that wanna make arrangements can do that. The street vendors can have time to, uh, uh, do whatever they need to do to get their permits. We don't have that. The ordinance doesn't go into effect for thirty days. So that pushes it out until thirty days, assuming you do first and second readings tonight, it pushes it out thirty days from now. And you can't adopt the resolution until it goes into effect.
Okay.
So it gives people less time to prepare.
Does declaring an emergency go into any other aspects of city function that could have negative unknown conse, I mean, negative consequences?
The emergency is just, we need this ordinance in effect.
So it's very specific to this ordinance, and then, secondly, the, the resolution.
Right.
I just have one more question.
Okay.
Just for this part, I've got a long list. Okay, um, the, my question is, when you were developing the, I guess, the third version of this even, did you, um, any staff consider, um, using commercial rather than residential? Then it wouldn't have so much of a, um, aversion to this, but, um, because if it was commercial, then-
Eliminate it to only the commercial areas and not the residential.
Right, or, and maybe also a couple of parks that have restrooms, but that would make more sense to me. And I would think that that would be a very friendly way for the city to welcome extra people to do something like that. But, um, and sure, everyone's gonna have their, you know, all their relatives plus all their best friends show up at their house, but that's, that could be for any reason. But I, I guess my problem with this is, um, the residential part of it. If it were commercial, I think that would be, that would make sense to me. And like I said, a couple of parks, whatever parks with, that have restrooms, that could be open.
Uh, so let me ask you a question of Mr. Townsend and Mr. Appicello on this one. Could a portion of this, such as parking, be restricted only to commercial areas and not residential while allowing the rental of a room, uh, to be all throughout the community?
Yeah, I, it could be done, sure. Yeah, we didn't consider it in this case, because, um, uh, in my mind principally where the, the demand's gonna be is west of the highway, um, which are largely residential areas. And, like, things like having somebody stay in their RV, you know, usually, right now, that's illegal outs, outside of RV parks. And where your cousin's coming with his RV, wants to park in your driveway and stay there, if this would allow that. That's the whole point of it in this case, is to allow, allow people to have their guests, the relatives, or it's, you know, if they choose to, they can, you know, say that someone, you know, can park their, some unrelated person, charge somebody to put their RV. But the main thing is to provide a safety valve for the people that want their family and friends to be able to occupy the RV in the driveway. And right now, that's illegal.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
Is there a possibility that the bathrooms, public bathrooms can be stayed open later or during this emergency time?
All of our restrooms will be open, including the community center.
Thank you.
What hours?
Yes.
Um, we start up opening, I believe they start opening at seven. We will be starting to open them early, probably around six o'clock, as our staff starts working at that time on that, on that day.
Closing them at?
We close them now down at, um, at sunset. So it's ten o'clock now.
And the community center closes at?
Nine, nine P M. Okay.
And they'll, they'll be porta potties that, during the same six days?
Yes, the porta potties will be delivered on, uh, Friday, I believe, and they will be picked up on Tuesday with, uh, um, with, uh, coming in and cleaning them and emptying them during those days.
And as Ron pointed out, we'll each have one stretch for our back, walking around town with the flags and continue to go on us here. Um, anyway, um, yeah, I, I, I appreciate the concern. I don't, I'll, I'll get into deliberation later, but anyway. Questions down here?
Yeah.
Um, it's, surprised it's about the ordinance. The, the way it's written, I, I'm good down the ways, uh, down through B, the paragraph that kind of describes, um, you know, why and, and citywide, and, and then, uh, specifically, "When authorized by such council resolution or order, one or more of the following temporary uses are permitted in any zone designated by resolution." And then it has the A, B, C, all that stuff. So I, I'm led to believe those are the only type of things that we're talking about.
Right.
Which I haven't cross-checked, but I'm, I'm assuming the resolution has those same things in here.
Essentially the same things, yes.
So why do I need both? And, and I guess I would, I'm sure, still not ready for the concept of authorizing illegal activity. Um, that, that's the trouble I'm having, but I, um, you know, there, there, I guess, do we need to name the stuff in the, the ordinance if, if you have a resolution and?
Short answer is yes.
Okay.
Because under organ law, you can't, the only way you can, uh, change the uses allowed on a piece of property is by ordinance. So this is giving everybody notice of the possibilities.
Thank you. Okay, that now, I forgot about that.
And then, under, the resolution, a future resolution for some other thing could have a, a subset of these things that are allowed. Or this one could be changed to just have a subset of, of the things that are in the ordinance.
Or, or our, I guess the other way I was going is, over time, if we start making this a nasty habit, you know, are there other things that are gonna get added to this ordinance? I mean, our, you, you thought, whipped it up right away, and not that with a lot of thought, but specifically for eclipse and kinda stuff. I don't know what other things could have been, could be citywide emergency, but that are lacking here, and we'd amend the ordinance?
Yeah, it's po, yes, I mean, just through the nor, ordinary ordinance amendment process, notice, citywide notice-
But again, that, that requires public notice.
Citywide notice, published notice, hearings at the planning commission and the city council.
So, so do you, in order to cut out on that, do you, do you actually have to name these kind of things, you know, a, you know, it's gonna be quite a process to add or subtract because it's another land use issue, um?
I think we should turn that over to our attorney to answer that one.
Well, the, as Richard stated, and it's cited in the added, there's a couple of things that are added here. One is a whereas clause that kind of attempts to guess which way you might go to narrow this. And one of the issues is stated that organ law requires that you legislate land use and zoning matters by ordinance, not by resolution, not by proclamation, not by, "Oh, well, we got this policy notebook over here." And that's, to be fair to developers and property owners, they that know what the rules are. So in land use, ever since measure fifty-six passed, the same, uh, measure that requires Richard to send out all these notices. Um, ever since that passed, you had to legislate land use and zoning by ordinance. You couldn't just pass a resolution. So in order to be consistent with that state law, the provisions in Richard's resolution, uh, about, you know, parking and, and camping were, were moved into the ordinance and said, "Okay, the D L C D and anybody who's watching, this is the exhaustive list of things that we could do." There are six things here. And we, it's about camping and some, uh, RV parking and regular parking and some retail. These are the things that could be, upon a finding by the council of a citywide event of some significance, right, a significant event, that we could pick some of these, one or more, you don't have to authorize all of them, and we could distinguish, as you mentioned, by zone. You could say, "In residential zone, no commercial activity, but, uh, you can do the camping." Or, "Parking's okay, but not in residential zones." You could, you could pick and choose, but only from these listed items. So in that way, what was advertised was narrowed and made consistent with the statute. Um, you could, you could say, "That's okay, this is, well, we're, we're just not interested in waiving compliance with mandatory rules." You could say that, in which case, we wouldn't go forward with this. But this was an attempt to be responsive and yet consistent with what the organ laws require for land use legislation.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
Okay. Sorry. Just, um, the reference to Rhodes End in the notice, I mean, it's wrong, but it was noticed, so what's the legal?
I'm gonna go, actually go get a copy of the notice just to make sure, in my mind, exactly what the issue is on that.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay. Uh, now it's time for public comment and testimony. I think we had just one signed up for this issue. Jeffrey, were you gonna, no, you're waiting on the V R D and the permit statement. Okay, so, Janet, are you still here? Thank you for your patience. This is one of those nights where we just talk a lot.
It's one of those nights. It's okay. I hope my voice holds out. We'll see. My name is Janet Knight. Excuse me. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I oppose amending the city code with regard to temporary uses. My family has maintained a home and been a part of this community for sixty years. I'm very concerned about the impact the passage of this ordinance would have on the neighborhoods of Lincoln City, including potentially, and now I hear mine in Rhodes End. According to the proposed language, the ordinance should meet a number of criteria, one of which is that it would have, quote, "No more than a minimal adverse impact," end quote. Neighborhoods all over Lincoln City are dense, without sidewalks, and have limited parking. The influx of tourists on any- The influx of tourists on any major weekend such as the kite festival, Fourth of July, and most certainly the Eclipse already put a strain on neighborhood livability as people try to find a way around 101, disobey speed limits, park where they shouldn't, and have little regard for the property of residents. This already puts public safety at risk. The city attorney stated during the planning commission meeting, and I believe tonight, not to think of this ordinance in relation to the Eclipse specifically, but rather as a long-term policy change potentially applicable to any type of large-scale citywide event. This ordinance will have long-term implications for residents and neighborhoods and could become a slippery slope as more and more events are approved under this category. Campsites on private property, food carts and other commercial activities will result in increased traffic and parking problems, more adults, children and pets on the roads where there are no sidewalks, and potential litter problems that residents will be left to clean up. These activities have no place in residential neighborhoods and I believe do not meet the test of, quote, "no more than a minimal adverse impact." I was concerned at the planning commission meeting about the discussion that the person who testified was referring to Rhodes End, but nobody on the planning commission said that it didn't include Rhodes End, as is indicated in the mailer that we received. So now I hear that, yes, Rhodes End was supposed to be included in this. So I'm very concerned, first of all, that there wasn't a public notice that was accurate that came out that referenced the fact that Rhodes End was included in this, and Rhodes End being a very dense neighborhood already with only one way in and one way out has significant additional and unique problems related to this ordinance. I believe the city needs to do three things. Research the impact on residential neighborhoods when a tourism-oriented city has adopted this type of resolution. When asked by a planning commissioner, Mr. Townsend stated that he had not done that yet. Second thing, consider the comment by the city attorney and what we just heard, that the council could adopt such an ordinance in commercial zones only. And finally, clarify whether this ordinance does in fact apply to Rhodes End. If it does not, the city needs to clarify when Rhodes End will be considered for this type of ordinance. Will it be grandfathered in or will it be treated separately under the zoning discussions? If we are included in this, I don't see how this hearing can proceed when we weren't informed. I think there would be more people here that would have an opinion about that. Naturally, there's been a lot of change in Lincoln City over the last 60 years. Our highest priorities should align with a balance between the needs of residents and the desire to maintain the city as a tourist destination. Thank you all for what you do to make Lincoln City a wonderful community.
Thank you. Anyone who did not sign up, who wishes to speak? Just give us your name and stay close to the mic.
Good evening. You guys work late. All right, my name is Elaine Walsh and I reside at 1842 Northeast 69 in Lincoln City and in Epsom, Rhodes End, and I'm here to oppose also the adopted ordinance regarding temporary uses. We recently received this page, proposed, which I showed, and thank you for bringing that up, zoning amendment about temporary uses from the city planning department. I want to point out again, as did Janet, seated at the bottom in small print, is that the proposed ordinance will not apply to properties outside the city limits or at this time to properties in the Rhodes End neighborhood. I want to please ask you to assure the city stands by this written statement that was sent to all of us. And that I think is a very important fact as far as people have to testify that had they known that we might be considered, there'd probably be a lot more opportunity for citizen input. Having said that, as a member of Lincoln City, because the temporary use amendment seriously affects, I believe, the safety, health and overall livability of all Lincoln City residents, there should be sufficient hearings for public and or written comment from Lincoln City residents. Having owned property in Rhodes End since 1974, this proposed ordinance and possible subsequent resolutions, to me, represent a serious and significant policy change at the city level by allowing commercial activity in residential zones. Such a proposal requires extensive citizen input, I believe, after broad discussions and clarifications by city officials. Further, as described last week at the 6/20, I believe it was June 20th, the planning commission, here's an example, a Rhodes End citizen's proposal to use his property, which is now zoned residential, as a camping area for up to 20 camping sites is evidence of the potential negative impact of this proposed ordinance. This property in question is in a heavily wooded area at the north end of Rhodes End and is surrounded by many oceanfront properties which appear especially at risks if campsites are allowed temporary use permits to put up tents, now maybe not fire pits, but charcoal grills and porta potties. These pose both a risk to health and safety as well as added problems for possible transport of emergency vehicles in an already crowded Logan Road where parking is now allowed on both sides of the street. We certainly have our ample share of vacation rental dwellings, i.e. VRDs. Are we now to become known as a VRT, i.e. vacation rental tent area? I certainly hope not. Please vote no on this ordinance as it stands. Further discussion and input, I believe, is paramount to assure good public policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please come forward. Sorry, he got his hand up first.
Stacy Barrett. I'm the guy she's talking about, with the property that wants to put the tents and the parking. And I guess all I can say to that is that we've had a long history owning the property, over 80 years. I'm a resident of Lincoln City, a businessman of Lincoln City. This particular property has had a lot of issues with just the locals trespassing, urinating, defecating on the property. Had a lot of problems. The police are, Lincoln City are unable to protect us. Now saying that, my property is going to get a lot of pressure. I've done a lot of thinking about how am I going to keep 10,000 people off my property when we can't even keep the locals off the property? One of the ways that I can see forward is I personally cannot stop 10,000 people from doing damage to my property. I've received damage on the property over spring break. Every year, we get damage to the property due to the VRDs, the rentals in the neighborhood. Now, this being said, how do I get control of the property? How do I stop all these people from coming onto the property and damaging me? One way is to solicit help. How do I offset the damages that are undoubtedly going to happen? Am I just to take 10 grand out of my pocket, point blank, and go, well, that's just the way it is? I need a mechanism by which I can recover my financial damage. The city council needs to pass this. I'm in favor of it. I'm in strong favor of it. It's not a permanent thing. It is a temporary measure by which you can relieve some of the financial damages that I'm going to have. As far as the, what, how does this aid me in protecting my property? And you can see me running up and down this 5.8 acres that we're talking about here. This isn't a little lot that we're putting these campsites on. This is a fairly large piece of property. It can handle that many campsites. It can handle the parking, off-street parking, no problem. By doing so, by controlling the people that come onto it somehow, by renting to them, by letting them come on the property, giving day-use passes and things of this nature, I have now just solicited a whole bunch of people that are going to help me monitor my property, that are going to help me control the crowd inflowing onto the property. So this is part of my motivation. I want an answer. If you're not going to let me try my way of controlling the people on this property, then I want the city to suggest to me how they're going to protect me because I just assume have nobody there. And this isn't the city. This is, I am a part of the city. We have a large problem on the north end of town. And so if you're not going to let me deal with it, then I expect the city to deal with it. And that's my bottom line. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Nope, you good? Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you so much. Any comment from representatives of public agencies? If there's no further comment, what, do we close the public hearing in record or are we going to have to amend this because of the mailing and all that?
Just before you close anything, I just want to say, I did look at the notice that went out and it very clearly says it doesn't apply to Rhodes End. At the time, the intent is to include Rhodes End, but it clearly says it doesn't. At the time we sent out the notice, we're looking at that first ordinance, which the way it was worded, I don't think the issue was there, but the ordinance that we're giving you tonight is very clearly is there. So I think if you adopt the ordinance tonight, it would not apply to Rhodes End in my estimation unless the city attorney agrees with me.
I could, I could make the argument that the 227-186 notice was in addition to what's required by law because, as you know, that statute requires those individual notices when the property is rezoned and also when it's changed in such a way that it further restricts uses. Well, this is actually loosening up uses. So, but we could make an argument that, well, the notice really wasn't required. I, I think we want to err on the side of public participation and when we've told people that it doesn't apply and they would have otherwise come here, I think they can make a pretty good argument, they've been prejudiced. So, and that's what Luba would look at, is where the party's prejudiced by an error, it's our fault. So I agree with Richard, if you were to adopt this ordinance, it's not going to apply in Rhodes End.
What does that mean for this very moment, though, as far as closing the hearing?
Well, first of all, this is the public hearing and you have an option to close the hearing or continue the hearing. Probably there wouldn't be, one reason to continue would be to correct the notice issue if you wanted to attempt to do that. I'm not sure that there's time to do that. You could close the hearing and close the record and go to deliberations. I'm not sure that a majority of you are interested in pursuing this ordinance and we would get that answered fairly quickly. If you do want to pursue this ordinance, then there's some steps we have to take. Under your charter, I have to read anything that changed in the last three days. And since there are proposed changes, I would have to read them all. And please don't make me read it all if you're not interested in going forward. And of course, we have to make an additional change to address the Rhodes End issue to clarify that it would not apply in Rhodes End. And at that point, you would approve first reading. If that, only if it is unanimous, could you do second reading this evening? If it's not unanimous, then you would have to continue it to the July 10th for second reading and then possibly at that point you could do an emergency. But again, you would have to, the ordinance itself sets forth the explanation for why it's an emergency. And if you don't agree with that, then we may not be proceeding with it.
Okay, so just, excuse me for being dense tonight and most every other night. The question I have, though, is if we call for a motion to close the public hearing, we can do that, continue the deliberations and then direct staff to mail to Rhodes End?
No, no, that was, that was part of, the first option would be continue or continue the hearing?
And then if it dies, a horrible death?
If you want to continue the hearing and ask staff to do further notification to try to fix this mailing issue, you could do that.
Okay.
That would probably be the first question. And if no one wants to do that, then you ought to talk about the merits.
All right. So if there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing on the record?
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Hearing not all, if they ever say?
Oh, for this, go ahead.
I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Hearing none, motion carries.
I have a question.
I'm a nay. I didn't vote nay. I'm a nay.
I did not hear that.
Yeah, I'm a nay.
Okay. You got that, Ken?
Thank you.
It was my understanding that we're still in the time period where we can't change zoning ordinance in Rhodes End. It has to be by citizen proposal.
We're in that five years where we couldn't rezone Rhodes End under our own initiative.
Okay, so.
What we have at the request of the neighborhood association, we have initiated rezoning of Rhodes End.
That hasn't passed.
And this would be, could, in my mind, this is a step in that, this is one piece of that, I guess. But as of now, Rhodes End is out of this.
Yeah.
So it may be a moot issue anyway. Because if you close the hearing, I guess we could, if you want to include Rhodes End, then we could renotice a new hearing to Rhodes End.
And that would be based upon the position that it's not a rezoning in the sense that the statute defines it. It's actually not becoming more restrictive on zoning, it's actually getting less restrictive. And it actually crosses the line between zoning and other regulations because it addresses other things that people in Rhodes End do have to comply with, like OTP and other issues.
Okay, thank you.
My two cents. And I think I mentioned this during the work session. We're going to have a regular Friday crowd showing up. You know, we're extending it from Thursday through Tuesday, I believe, right?
That's the proposal.
Right. But I'm going to assume it's still going to be the Friday, 5:00 crowd showing up. Who are they going to call at 5:00 on a Friday night? Because there's not going to be anyone here at city hall. Most of these things aren't going to be handled by the police. Who are they going to call on Saturday? Who are they going to call on Sunday? Monday would be the first day the city's going to field any calls, right? You're basically.
You're saying the police aren't the city.
Well, no, but I mean, there's some things the police aren't going to handle.
With a zoning complaint or something, yeah, they're not going to hear it, hear back from us until.
Right, they say, hey, someone's camping on my neighbor's property and the neighbor said it was okay. The police are not going to enforce an ordinance on that, right? They're going to say, well, they got the guy's permission, right? It's not a trespassing, so the police aren't going to be concerned with that. All I'm saying is, and again, folks, I can go either way on this, but I'm in favor of moving this ahead because we have problems that are going to happen. Are we just going to, how can I put this? You're not going to be able to call anyone in the first place. There's not going to be any mechanism to stop this. Now, as far as the food and such goes, I've very stated my concerns about foodborne illnesses and I'm very sensitive to that. But I'm seeing it, I'm just anticipating an influx of vehicles through our town. Would you like them on the road? Would you like them parked up and down your roads where they can park it or they can not? Look at the kite festival. I sat there and looked outside my business and there was not one ticket written up and down that road for cars parked in bike lanes and their wheels sticking into traffic lanes. Not a single, it just, it happens. We know it's going to happen and we deal with it. We know it's gonna happen, and we deal with it. And that's what I'm saying, is this is one of those things where we just, it's gonna happen. We could be gracious hosts about it, we can try to accommodate our visitors, or we can get really nitpicky and try to pick, I'm losing my train of thought here. I'm just saying, I don't think you're gonna have any mechanism to get satisfaction from this if you wanna turn in your neighbor. You're gonna call Monday and then have him turn him in. Am I getting, am I saying anything clear here tonight?
I know what you're saying.
The Sudafed is really ringing in my head here tonight.
I understand what you're saying, is that regardless of what you do tonight, many of these things are gonna happen. And if they do, they're, right. There's one positive effect, I know maybe the city manager or the police chief can mention, but one thing it might do is reduce the calls that the police are gonna get.
Absolutely. So again, it's where do you want these people to be? Now, do we put out an edict from the city? We put it in all the newspapers saying, look, if you think you're gonna come here and camp out on your neighbor's lawn, forget it, go down to Depot Bay, go north, go south, because it isn't gonna happen in Lincoln City. Is that gonna stop it? I don't think so. This is a peculiar incident. It's a, it's a once-in-a-lifetime thing, and it's not, I don't think it's fair to equate it to Memorial Day anymore than it's fair to equate it to kite festival. Kite festival happened, and if you were in that part of town, you felt it. Anyway, this, my two cents on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
I, I think too, that if people are coming here, they've already made plans to be here, or you've called your friends and said, hey, can I stay with you? You don't have to charge them money or anything. But there's only so many people that this town can handle. The town is full. And so if you make availability for more people to come, they're going to come. There's, there's only so much capacity we can handle. And at some point, you just have to say, well, if you don't have a reservation and nowhere to stay, perhaps you should go elsewhere.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mind short, it's, I'm just not interested in making an activity that's illegal. Legalizing an illegal activity, it's confusing. You're right on all your observations. I don't think you need this ordinance anyway. You're gonna get calls either way. But I'm just not interested and won't be voting for an ordinance that makes some of our illegal activities legal for a temporary basis.
First, my biggest concern is what does that mean for the calls that the city receives? Are they under any obligation to fine people? So you get the call Monday morning, and say, hey, this guy's been camping out here Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Do we then start going after our residents for it?
We will do our very best to enforce whatever ordinances you have adopted.
That's not my question. My question is, if it's illegal to do something on your property, and we get the call on Monday that someone's been doing it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, what's the city gonna do about it? What are we gonna do to the property owner that says, oh, you shouldn't have had those people camping on your property?
At this point, I don't know the answer to that question.
And what are we gonna do to the person who sold hot dogs on Monday morning or Saturday night?
You know, interesting, mine is, I would agree with city manager Chandler, that we'll do the best we can. We have code enforcement where we deal with that daily. And you know what? You go out, say this is an illegal activity, here's a 10-day letter, please correct your action. So?
I, I understand.
You know, so I, the point being is, you know, we know we're not staffed for this. We know, and I agree with the statement you made previously. Who are they gonna call? You're gonna call either way. You're gonna be mad about not enforcement, or you're gonna be mad about somebody temporarily getting away with something they think. You know, I, I just, I don't wanna put my name onto something that legalizes it. You know, I, it's easier for me to explain, you know what? Citizens come forward, complain about our police force, you know, being overstaffed, you know, or understaffed, you know, either, either way, it happens all the time. And, you know, it's one of those things we live with. But I, I just have real trouble, all of a sudden, because the moon and sun line up differently, we, okay to do stuff, we spent a lot of time on thinking about ordinances and safety and soundness. So, mine's a no vote, so.
And guess?
Sure, I, we're, we're talking about putting a tent up, having cars parked on your property, and if you have all the permits, selling food. You're speaking like it's like selling drugs, like it's an illegal activity that now we're making legal. These are legal things that occur that we're just allowing it in your yard, that you choose to or not choose to do. Just because it's there doesn't mean that all of us are required to have all these people in our yard. We can still individually say no, and we know that those people around us, though there might be a vacation rental home or not, if we're part of the community, we know they're gonna be there or not, and we can look out for our community ourselves. Just because it's theirs, you know, it's like a free-for-all, I just, I don't understand that reasoning of that. So I think it's, you know, it's better to say yes. There's gonna be so many people here, so many people. And so, let's just call all the time? Or can we kind of regulate, welcome people, bring, you know, be host, be gracious, and say, hey, this is what we're trying to do. We are Lincoln City, we're not staffed, we're totally overwhelmed, and we're gonna do the best we can and welcome you. And here's our solution to that. This is the best we have. Not, nope, 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 nope.
Yes, Martin?
I think I would've agreed with that about three months ago when you were trying to make this an event rather than this, but I think it's too late for that, for me now. I, and if my next-door neighbor would, if his daughter or son would come to visit and they're gonna camp out in his backyard, that's one thing. But if you're, if it would be a number of people, and we have no way of knowing or controlling that, no thanks. Right now, on my block, I do way too much people managing already. I am not interested in trying to do the usual and then ramp up to who knows how many times more. And, and?
There's provisions in place. You have to be able to provide parking. You have to be able to have the permits. If those are not there, then you call.
As it is now, during the summer, it is almost impossible on some days to be able to drive up my street, to get into my, on my own property.
And I'm very sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry too. But anyway, I'm, I really wish that we had had this conversation a few months ago when we were first talking about the difference between planning for the event or, you know, emergency preparedness planning, which was important, and I'm glad we did that. But we could've done the overlay of this discussion months ago when we would have time to sort all this out. I am not in favor of this on residential property, I am not. And if it were commercial, that would be a whole different everything. And I have a whole bunch of more comments, but my vote now is no.
Thank you. You know, I, I guess my biggest reason for voting yes would be the parking. As I said earlier, you're gonna have cars all over the streets. Well, it'd surely be nice to bring two of them onto a lot and get them off at the street, whereas now they can't park on someone's front lawn. Now you can let them. It's gonna ease that. I have a property down south, I could probably, I could probably put about 10 or 12 RVs on that property, but I'm not gonna. I'm gonna rope that thing off, and I'm not, it's, it's like when I talk to people about VRDs, and forgive me, I'm giving my high horse about VRDs. It's not easy, folks. It is not an easy thing to do, to manage a VRD. And it's no more easier to manage a piece of property with 10 RVs on it. I'm not interested in cleaning up after them, I'm not interested in managing them like that. I don't see everyone opening up their home to campers. I don't want them on my property, I'm not gonna let them rent. I'm not gonna let my family come to my house. I don't want them here. I'm busy enough.
All right.
My family knows where I stand on this issue. It's like owning a pool in Portland, you don't know you got relatives until the summer, right? And then it's the same with owning a place on the coast. No offense, relatives, stay away. Anyway, so that's my, and I'm with Riley on this, and it's a matter of graciousness. It's a matter of, what do we say as a city? Relax, we're gonna take care of you.
We're saying we're gonna call all the cops 100% of the time. For six days, we're gonna call the cops every day. Because nothing is going to be accepted. That's what we're gonna do.
Okay, anybody else? We're gonna move this night along here.
Hopefully.
Okay, then I guess we're, we've had a, do we have a motion to second already? We had our discussion? No, we haven't had a motion. Any motions?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Well, at this point, there's been no readings of the ordinance, so you'd only be directing us to? No, actually, we're only looking for direction. Do you want to pursue this ordinance and conduct the readings? In which case, I'll start reading if, if you want to do that. But you guys need to decide if you want to continue with this ordinance.
Tell me how you'd like that to look, you want us to know?
Yeah, earlier you had Richard say, all we're looking for is direction to come back to with an ordinance on this. And same thing here, only it wouldn't be later, it'd be now.
All right, then I guess it's?
And it would have to be you, man?
No. Well, yeah, yeah, yes. So anyway, all in favor of directing the staff to pursue this matter, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays?
Nay.
Then you don't have to do anything. That was easy. Do I have to read another one?
Can we?
Why can't we have like a Disneyland?
Can we call it for the night, or are these other?
Yeah, do we have to do this?
May I suggest one thing? We do, we have had at least one person who has been waiting for the VRDs. I would at least, I would at least conduct that one. And then if you want to continue the other ones to another night, that would be fine.
That work, guys? I think we can knock this one out pretty quick. Okay.
Is that the next one? No.
Guys?
Mr. Mayor?
If you wanna have the conversation, take it out there.
You might wanna also ask for the other people in the audience, if they're here for any of the other ordinance.
Any other ordinance besides the VRD that we might not be discussing?
Yeah, the poultry.
Oh, the, the chicken.
The fowl.
The domestic fowl. Oh, you've been waiting all night, well?
So, can I move to continue the public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendments to allow indoor theaters?
Yeah, is there any stress on that one?
Not this, not this one.
Got a motion to second, discussion?
Need to continue to, it's time of place.
To?
July 10th.
July 10th, 2017, 6 o'clock, this location.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
I move to continue the public hearing on the 2015 Transportation System Plan, planning file ZOA 2017-03, until August 28, 2017, 6 o'clock, this location.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Nowhere VRD.
About 12, did we do that already?
When we get there, we can do it.
Mayor?
We're at 10 now.
I'm sorry, did Counselor Hinton, did you second both of those? Okay, thank you, yes.
Or is that one we can skip? Do we already do?
10 left.
I, I understand, I'm asking about Agenda 12, land use enforcement inspection procedures, is that?
Well, we can continue that when we get there.
Okay, well, we can, yeah. But that's the way we're gonna go. Vacation rentals, it's now 10:13 PM. The public hearing for file ZOA 2017-04 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in Section 1780050C2 to state that vacation rental dwelling land use authorizations will expire, if the owner has not obtained a license within one year of the land use approval or subsequently fails to renew the license by the city's deadline. The council pack includes a draft final ordinance and findings following the public hearing and deliberations. Council may decide tonight to adopt the ordinance as presented or, it just trails off as or. Did you have something else there? Mr. Appicello? It just trails off, it says, as presented or?
Or renew a vacation rental dwelling license in a timely manner. You have it? It's, a vacation rental dwelling land use approval void if the property owner fails to obtain or renew a vacation rental dwelling license in a timely manner, right?
The last sentence, it says, the council's pack includes a draft final ordinance and findings following the public hearing and deliberations. Council may decide tonight to adopt the ordinance as presented or?
Or you could do a future amended or not adopted.
Here we go, that's what I was trying to say. And we go over to the start here. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter earlier this month and has forwarded a recommendation as outlined in staff's council communication. City council's role in this legislative process is to consider any written oral testimony as well as the Planning Commission's recommendations and information from staff, make a final decision as to ordinance amendments. Council may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation or may take other action, including taking no action. The council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare conflict of interest in this matter? I have a VRD, but it, I don't know if it applies to me, because I guess if I didn't?
You're not in the R15.
Yeah, that's right, I'm out of that. Okay, great, I don't. Okay. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I'd like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures and brochure outlining these, a brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If council members have questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will staff please present its report?
Thank you, Mayor. In the R15 zone, we have a cap on the number of full-time vacation rental dwellings that are allowed. Cap is 10% of the lots that are in the zone. There, the cap is 194 full-time vacation rental dwellings in that zone. Today, we got a VRD application in in that zone, so we're at 192 right now, assuming that one gets approved. What this ordinance would do would take those, those people who got VRD land use authorizations, they either never bothered to get a license or haven't gotten a license, didn't renew it within the grace period, would then give the planning director the opportunity to declare those, ones that were not, that either didn't get a license or didn't renew, declare them void, give the property owners notice that the planning director has done that, and give them the opportunity then to appeal that. So what this does, we have, right now, we have nine vacation rental dwelling land use approvals in the R15 zone that do not have a license. So it would have the effect presumably of screwing away with those approvals, and so there would be an opportunity for another nine property owners to get a full-time vacation rental dwelling approval and license within the R15 zone. What I have to say?
Right, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Okay. Yes.
How long is the license grace period?
It goes, I believe, until the end of March.
Okay, so.
It's relatively short. 60 days.
90 days. January, February, March?
But for right now, it's passed for this year.
Okay, thanks.
How much is the appeal?
Would be, uh, the, I believe the normal appeal rate is $150.
How much is the license? Pardon me? How much is the license?
It's the same.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Now's the time for public comment and testimony. And I think you get the award tonight. Yes, you do. Come on forward. The most patience. That's right. I sure appreciate you being here and waiting on us. There was a lot to cover tonight. So give us your name, speak in the mic, and...
I'm Jeffrey Evans. Thanks for listening to me, Mayor and Council. I'm a property owner down here at 2579 Anchor Avenue. It's right on the beach. My sister and I own it. We've never had a VRD license. And, um, I guess I'm here to, uh, allow myself to appeal something that I don't understand based on this, because it's very vague and it refers to other ordinances that I'm not familiar with. So I'm just trying to preserve my right to, uh, appeal what's going on with this, if necessary. I'm not, we're not trying to, uh, run a Motel 6, and I don't wanna... We've had it rented before when my mother owned it, but it got overrun, we stopped it. So my goal is to retain property rights so that we have, that we are able to do that VRD stuff. And we're in the R1 zone, and I guess there's, you know, a limited amount. And if we're out of luck, I would be very, very disappointed. But mostly, I just wanna retain the right to appeal something I don't understand. And, uh, I made some other notes here, it's just a... Yeah, that's about it, really, uh... You know, it affects our property value if we wanted to sell the place. And, uh, I understand about the, you know, overrun, like, that's why we stopped it, that they, they, it was ocean hideaways, I believe. And they churned our property. We couldn't even get in there to do maintenance. We paid some guy 600 bucks to, um, you know, stain the deck, and it looked like a drunk high school student did it. It was terrible. And, I mean, I guess we're one of the evil VRD owners from Portland that aren't down here enough. But we're actually a potential VRD owner. But, um, you know, it's right on the water, it's perfect for tourism, uh, sharing with family, you know, and close friends. And I just wanna be able to retain the right to have some, uh, property rights about being able to at least pay, break even, you know, maybe make a little bit of money so we can maintain the place. Right now, we're not making any money or not breaking even, so that's basically my goal. And I don't wanna use, lose my appeal. So, any questions for me, or am I doing the right thing? This is my first meeting, so...
Well, we can't do a darn thing for you here. So what I would say is, that man back there, Mr. Townsend, would be the guy to go talk to. And he could direct you on the right path.
Well, I got some notice that said if I didn't write or come to the meeting, I would lose my right to appeal anything. So that's why I'm here.
Go, go see him. All right, thank you. Perfect. And again, thank you for your patience. Certainly appreciate it. And it was the last signed up, so anyone who didn't sign up, come on forward.
Stacy Barrett. I just wanted to say at this moment that, uh, I really don't like VRDs in my neighborhoods. I don't like my neighborhood being turned into a low-end rental district, or a rental district of any kind. And so this whole topic is really stressing to me in that you, at one point, won't let me do anything with my property, yet you'll turn around and let people use their property and make money on it through the VRD system. Doesn't seem fair, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Seeing none. Ah, is there any comment from, uh, representatives of a public agency? Seeing none, if there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing in the record?
Done.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, da, 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 the next page, it was a pleasure of the council.
So this be appropriate to move to approve the ordinance, 20th?
I, actually, if, if you want me to do the readings, just make a motion to proceed with the readings and I'll do the readings.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Motion, second? We're being told something, Dennis just says, "I'm done."
Maintenance has...
All right, well, we still have, uh, power here, okay. So we have a motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Appicello?
Uh, Your Honor, Council, before I do the reading, I just wanna point out that since the Planning Commission meeting, I, I did talk to Richard and added a section that clarifies that in the R15 zone, if you're, uh, not, if you don't, don't have a license, and you haven't had a license for the last year, you wouldn't actually not have any VRD authorization. You would go back to accessory, so... The, the direction you gave to the manager was to go take those people in the R15, and if they have limitations, uh, remove them and they can rent 365 days. But you wouldn't do that if you haven't used, obtained a license. So, um, that's been added to the ordinance in Section 2. I don't have to read it because it was in the packet, but I just wanted to point out that's a change from the Planning Commission when we talked about it. Anyway, the, uh, this is the first reading of ordinance 2017-10, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, Chapter 1780, provisions applying to special uses, amending Section 1780050, vacation rental dwelling use criteria concerning abandonment of VRD land use approvals. Ask for approval of first reading.
I need a motion for that.
I move to approve first reading. Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, go ahead.
Williams?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yep.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, this is second reading of ordinance 2017-10, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, Chapter 1780, provisions applying to special uses, amending Section 1780050, vacation rental dwelling use criteria concerning abandonment of VRD license approvals. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, oh, we gotta roll call it again?
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, on to the chickens.
Yeah.
Okay, it is now 10:27 PM. The public hearing for File ZOA 2017-05 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in Section 1780, oh, eight, zero, A, animals, to add a provision that any accessory structure for chickens such as coops shall be at least 10 feet away from any dwelling on the same lot and also on adjacent lots. Should it be of adjacent lots? Shall be at least 10 feet away from any dwelling on the same lot, also on adjacent lots?
Or on adjacent lots.
Okay. "This council packet includes a draft ordinance without findings. Following the hearing, the council may direct staff to bring a final ordinance to the future meeting for reading and adoption. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter earlier this month and has forwarded a recommendation as outlined in Staff's Council Communication. City Council's role in this legislative process is to consider any written or oral testimony as well as the Planning Commission's recommendation and information from staff and make a final decision as to ordinance amendments. Council may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation or may take other action, including taking no action. Council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare conflict of interest in this matter?" Hearing none. "The substantive criteria that apply to this include, hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I'd like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. A brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. Staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If council members have questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak into the microphone, begin by stating your name only. If you have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will staff please present its report?"
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this, uh, ordinance amendment arises out of, uh, a concern expressed by a, uh, resident about chickens on an adjacent property. The, uh, you referred the matter to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission considered and, uh, recommended initially that there be a, uh, that a accessory structure for chickens, essentially chicken coops, would have to be at least 10 feet away from a dwelling, any dwelling, whether it was on the same lot or on an adjacent lot. Uh, in their hearing, uh, last week, the Planning Commission, uh, amended that to also say that, uh, it would, the coop would have to be at least 10 feet away from any property line. Reviewing the ordinance we have on small animals, that is consistent with what we say regarding setbacks for, uh, kennels, which is for four or more small animals. They should, they are required to be 10 feet away from the property line. And, uh, uh, we also have a setback provision for, uh, vermiculture, which is a, you know, raising worms. And the, the, uh, the structure for, for the, the worms are supposed to be 10 feet away from the property line as well. Uh, so this would do that. What this would mean is that by being 10 feet away from the property line, it would, the actual setback from adjacent structures on, on, on other lots would be, uh, would be 15 feet for a one-story structure, because there's a five-foot setback for the, for the structure on the adjacent lot, or 17 and a half feet if it's more than one story. So you get that, uh, greater, uh, setback, assuming that the structure is, is conforming with the standards that we have in effect now. The 10-foot setback from the property line obviously condenses the area where the coop can allow it to be. If you have a, a relatively narrow lot, if you, or if you have, uh, like a house that's pushed back on the lot, as you get, get closer, you end up getting the 10 feet from a structure, 10 feet from the property line. Eventually, you get to a point where there, there can't be a, uh, a chicken coop. I'll just point that out as, uh, a potential effect. I'm not arguing against it or for it, or anything, just telling you that's, that's what's there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
In, it has domestic fowl and 10 feet from any property line, but in this document, it says chickens and 10 feet away from any dwelling.
Right, the, the Planning Commission recommended that it be both 10 feet away from a dwelling and 10 feet away from a, from the property line.
I'm just not seeing it, words, I just... So which is it gonna be?
They recommended, you know, the draft ordinance that you have, I think, just says 10 feet from a dwelling.
Right.
Planning Commission recommended that also be amended to include 10 feet from the property line.
It's, it's...
We're not asking you to, we're not asking you to adopt a, a, an ordinance tonight. We're asking you to tell us what ordinance, if any, you want us to bring back to you.
In other words, their recommendation is it would be 10 feet and another 10 feet. 10 feet from the dwelling line and 10 feet from the property line, which is why, uh, why it could be up to 17 and a half feet, because of this, uh, if it's a two-story dwelling. 15 feet if it's a one-story dwelling. Mr. Mayor?
You have the, the chicken coop on one property and a house on the adjacent property. Assuming the house on the adjacent property is a two-story house and it meets required setbacks, there's gonna be at least seven and a half feet from the property line. And the coop's gotta be 10 feet away on the, on the other side of the property line, so the total is 17 and a half feet.
So in other words, if, if it was just the 10 feet from a dwelling, you could have it, uh, three feet inside the property line. But if it's 10 feet from the dwelling and 10 feet from the...
Yeah, I got that part, it was the, the second story that threw me. Explain that again, why is, why is setbacks...
We have different setbacks for the...
For a chicken coop?
The height of the house. No, for the...
Property line.
Property line.
Counsel Anderson?
Mr. Townsend, was there any discussion for Planning Commission on, um, why 10 feet away from any building? Meaning even the, the, uh, my, the owner of the chickens building? I, to me, I see this as an ordinance of a friendly neighbor ordinance, but if I wanna live with chickens, you know, as long as it's on my property, you know, why can't it be next to my house? So I'm, I'm wondering, is there a logical reason of why we're controlling where I can put my, my garden shed, um, or chicken coop, or dog kennel, or something?
Actually, accessory structures under the building don't have to be, uh, all right, it's, it's, accessory structures have to be at least 10 feet away from your dwelling.
Is, now help me, is there a logical reason for that?
I believe it has to do with, uh, fire danger.
Oh, okay. That, that helps. Is there a size of an accessory dwelling would be the next thing, because...
There is a, uh, I don't have it in front of me, but yeah, there is, if it's over a certain size, then it's gotta be separated by the 10.
So then a, to take this, a, a small chicken coop, um, could be within 10 feet of my house.
Your own dwelling.
Own, but still have the restriction...
Um, well, unless, with the way the, the draft ordinance is written, the answer is no.
Right, well, that's where I'm...
But you could, you certainly could change that.
But would that have to do, sorry, but, you know, would that have to do, would, would we need to slip in the definition of accessory building there, or something under a certain size can...
Could specify a size, if it's X square feet or smaller, or if X square feet are larger, it needs to be 10 feet away or something like that.
Cause I, I, much to your, as you went, the explanation on it, depending on your lot size, if you were trying to do the, you know, away from the lot line and away from the other house, and you really didn't have to be other than 10 feet away from your lot line, I mean, that, that gives a lot more, in the reading, a lot more clarity. And I, I think that would be a helpful maneuver, uh, assuming the accessory building size is large.
Well, I, I do see the logic in that too, because if we're just gonna say an accessory unit, if I go down to Ace and buy one of those homemade sheds and put it up there for my tools, do I have to separate it from my house by 10 feet?
No, you don't.
Well, I know, but we don't have a size, or you do, but you just don't have it handy.
I'm sorry?
We do have a size limitation.
Yes, we do.
So you just don't have it handy.
Then, then...
Okay, anybody else? Other questions? Okay, thank you.
So, the direction?
Well, no, we're still gonna do the rest of it here.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Uh, that's it, thank you. Uh, now's the time for public comment and testimony. It's your turn. I know, I wish I had a prize. Do we have any cookies left? This is, I think is a record for me.
Say, uh, won't be till 11 o'clock till I get home.
Thank you for your questions, I sure appreciate it.
My name is Sharon Cook. Um, I'm here to comment on the Planning Commission's recommendations regarding the chicken coops. The proposal amends part of Title 17 to add a provision that any accessory structure for chickens such as coops be at least 10 feet away from any dwelling on the same lot or adjacent lots. The Planning Commission has also added the recommendation that they be 10 feet away from the property line. This is the same regulation for dog kennels. So currently, our neighbors have a chicken coop on our property line, which puts it about 10 feet from our home. It's what you see when you look out our window. It's a permanent structure, so we have accepted the fact that it's there. We hired a contractor to build us an arbor to shield it somewhat from the... We hired a contractor to build us an arbor to shield it somewhat from view. Although our situation cannot be changed, we are making the above requests for other Lincoln City residents, so they don't have to go through this. 10 feet from a dwelling is simply not enough. The added 10 feet from the property line would significantly improve the regulation. We are anticipating a smell as the weather gets warmer and inflect more flies, which occurred last year, and we appreciate that the owner does, has finally flipped their wings, so they're not always flying over our fence into our yard, which they've been doing. But we do ask that the members of the town or the city council consider this a good neighbor policy and not any infringement on other people's rights here. Please accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and don't allow chicken coops to be built so close to dwellings.
Thank you. And again, thank you so much for your patience. Greatly appreciate it. Anyone else? Nope. Is there any comment from representatives of public agencies? If there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing in the record?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 What is the pleasure of the council?
I'd move that we direct staff to write the recommended change that Planning Commission has recommended to us regarding domestic fowl and include some kind of wording to clarify that, you know, either the size of the accessory dwelling, something below that size can be closer to your own building, own home than 10 feet.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion? I think my only concern is, I agree with you, Council Anderson, and I think the idea that we're gonna tell people, you can't have something close to your house because you might have something hazardous in it, well, then we should address, you can't have hazardous stuff. But to say that I can't put a chicken coop three feet closer to my house is nobody's business, frankly. If I'm allowed to have them, what do you care whether I got it three feet closer to my house or not? The property line is a different matter for me. That affects the neighbors. And then I think we do have, and I think I asked about it, we have laws about dogs wandering on the properties, cats wandering on the properties. If the chicken crosses the line, is it a trespass matter, Mr. Appicello? What is it? Why did the chicken cross the property line?
We do have an ordinance about animals at large, so...
Yeah, that's right, the animals at large. So there's some enforcement action there, right? So you could make it difficult enough for your neighbor to, or have to keep a roaster going, I guess. Threaten them with it, yeah. About 170 degrees for 35 minutes. Anyway, so that's the only thing, I just, I don't like the idea of adding another restriction without maybe easing a little bit on something, but I guess we can address that.
Well, we are.
Yeah, he did say that.
Well, no, but we still, the idea that we're adding the 10 feet from the property line, but we're still retaining the 10 feet from the dwelling.
No, no, no.
Please correct me.
We aren't giving a, much to your point of, if I go down and buy the Sears put together, I can put that right up next to the house.
Right.
And that's all I'm asking for is clarification that what an accessory outbuilding is, so that we can break that 10 feet. So we're giving both.
Okay, I just didn't hear that we would make an amendment to it. We're just gonna get a number and still...
Oh, no, no. The motion called for, and to include that in the ordinance, you know, the outbuildings or, you know, so I guess what I'm envisioning, since it's domestic fowl ordinance, that if the coop is under some size, it can be next to your house, right up to it if you want.
Right. But I just don't know if that's, is that language in there?
No, but we're directing them to put it in there. That's the motion.
Okay.
So it meets your request.
All right, I'm good. Anyone else? Do I need a roll call on this one? No? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Hearing none. Motion carries. Resolution or whatever, I just said okay to him.
Are you gonna do 12, or do you want me to continue?
Continue.
I move to continue the public hearing on planning file COA 2017-05 to July 10, 6 o'clock, this location.
I'm showing 2017-06.
05.
05.
06 is what makes sense, because 05 was the last one.
Okay, well, I got on this one, so, okay.
The one that's about updating land use enforcement and inspection procedures.
So, that's our word, we all understand. Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mayor, who seconded that motion?
No idea.
Thank you.
Oh, we are almost there. Okay. This has been fun.
You can do it.
All right, let me get down to the bottom here, sorry. Okay, special order of business.
Not on this.
Contract approval. Lincoln City Police Employee Association, LCPEA. Anybody listening?
Yeah.
We have a contractor approval to approve.
I... Oh, okay.
Okay. Do we need Colleen? If you have any questions.
If you have any questions.
Okay, any questions? Do you want us to get rolling on this?
We need to strike that one sentence, correct?
Correct.
I move to approve the proposed collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
As presented, except for Article 19, Section 2, the sentence that is clothing allowances will be paid in equal quarterly payments each year as W-2 wages subject to withholding. I'd like that sentence stricken.
For a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Do we got a roll call on this one? Discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, discussion. No discussion.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Hogland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you so much.
Let's just say, thank you to Colleen.
Great job, Colleen.
Thank you to Colleen.
It wasn't just me, it was the whole team.
I was Africa, whatever.
Good job.
Chief.
Absolutely. Okay, city manager, city attorney reports?
I wouldn't ask for anything less.
Less you. Appicello? Thank you. Okay, thanks for being part of the chicken joke. That was great. Okay. Actions, if any, based on work session, executive session meetings, nothing here. Additional comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items? Hearing none. Additional announcements or comments by city council? Not today.
I do.
Go.
Okay. I think we've learned our lesson, that these really, really long, involved agendas for our meetings probably aren't the best idea. And then at our next opportunity, I would just like to talk about the TAF doc and dredging. I just wanna know more about it. And I'll save the rest of my comments.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, just a question. On the outside agency, when we approved the city budget, we put $100,000 additional money into that outside agency, which makes it a total of $150,000. Were we gonna talk about reletting applications for that money? How should potential applicants raise their hand as to getting a wish for that opportunity?
Kathy, what's our rule on that for the applying for those funds?
We have, well, this is the first time we've had this scenario come forth. In the past, including this year, we've had a deadline, and we've advertised it and sent out applications to the different organizations. They have submitted by that deadline, and that's presented to you as part of the budget. There's a couple of questions that I think are pertinent as you look at this. The first one is, do you want to reopen this, since we have added an additional amount? And the second was that the, at least in the budget message, the budget was prepared by staff, we had indicated that we were putting that in for a specific purpose, which was to deal with organizations that provide service to the homeless. Do you want to restrict that additional $50,000 to $100,000 to just those types of organizations? Or do you want to open that up to a broader group? So that's an additional question, I think, that is important to address.
Well, I would guess, for me, if that was the discussion point in the budget hearing, to make it for that purpose, I would say keep it to that, rather than we're gonna have people applying for disc golf and things like that.
Are you referring to the $50,000 or the $100,000?
Well, I'm asking, because I wasn't here for the budget.
That was just an increase to the outside agency request, period. There was no specific allocation that this $50,000 that was increased by the budget or the $50,000 that was added as a one-time, this-year-only thing, you know, that was it. It was just an increase.
That's correct.
So there was, there's three $50,000 in there, you know, the one initial, the one that was proposed, and then a one-time adding of the 50.
And the other thing, just to note, I would venture that the applications for the traditional $50,000, our cutoff was before the Budget Committee even met, because the applications were in the budget.
That's right.
So, one, nobody knew another $50,000 was going in there for homeless, as in the write-up, and certainly unless they were paying attention, you know, the other $50,000 was a surprise. So again, I would think we'd want to re-vet it or allow people to reapply, because their projects would be a lot different.
Do we have any kind of timeline when we have to have this done by?
No, sir. Other than, I do know that there are organizations that have based their budgets on this, and they are also coming into their, beginning of their next fiscal year. I might point out one thing, we have had two organizations that had submitted as part of the outside agency request, they met the deadline, but they have since, when they learned of this, have submitted a supplementary information.
No, I'd like to correct that. The one application came in after the extra amount was announced. The other application came in on April 29th.
Right.
Where we were still in discussions, and the money, extra money had not evolved, so I think that might be appropriate. And the letter had been submitted by March 29th.
Okay.
So I think that might be an appropriate consideration.
Okay.
And I just have kind of a general question. Why would we wanna reopen it up? Don't we have more, that's my understanding, that we have a lot more requests dollar-wise than we have budget for even now?
You had $131,000 at the time the budget was submitted to the Budget Committee. With the two requests, that comes up to about $231,000, almost $200,000, or another additional $100,000 from those two requests.
And furthermore, I just, the second part of my question, and furthermore, when they submitted their applications, did they know how much was in the budget? We hadn't done that yet.
No, we had not submitted the budget to you, so they would not have known that.
So I say no.
I have a two-parter. Why, you know, are all these organizations checking how much the other is asking for? Like, if you're gonna ask for money that you need for your organization, you're gonna ask for the money that you need. Oh, now there's more money, and now I need more?
Timeout. Obviously, you've not sat on the other side of the table. First, you do some research, and you know that this organization is one of the few cities that have been giving money out to outside agencies, this process. You've got the chart in the book, you can go back and see that it's been close to $50,000 for 10 years. So if I'm a nonprofit counting on this, I know there's a $50,000 bucket there. That's what I'm gonna work on. My request isn't gonna be for $55,000. It's gonna be for a $5,000, something reasonable, knowing just, and my project's gonna be based on that. If there's $150,000, you know, I'm assuming I have other needs and other projects, you know, that I'm gonna apply for. So it's in direct proportion with what the pot is.
However, this specific budget, it was $131,000 in requests on a basis of the last 10 years of being $50,000, period. So how are they gonna ask for $130,000 when traditionally, we've only offered $50,000?
One, if I can, Mr. Mayor, again, the answer is, not everybody gets what they ask for or anything at all. Because there's other criteria that, you know, we usually have. And I can tell you again, from sitting on those tables, you know, this morning, you know, a million-dollar request for $150,000 to give away. You know, so you ask. I mean, people ask. That doesn't mean they're gonna get it. And I guess if you wanna make, have impact, because you're right, you can take the $200,000 request and somehow do a proportion with what your pot is, 150, and give everybody a piece. Or you could look at the actual projects and weigh whether, you know, it makes sense or not. And that's what I would hope you'd do.
Well, and I'm in agreement with Council Anderson. I'm just, I think I'm within my rights as the chair to say we can hold off on these things, right? I still have direction over the committees and when they meet, right? Especially, this is my committee. So I don't see a big problem in waiting and advertising that, as long as, you know, we're sensitive to people's fiscal timeframe. Again, I've sat in on, you know, my last two years on this committee, and sometimes they don't get what they want. Sometimes they get more than they thought they should get, and we base it on a lot of criteria that we'll discuss, that the three of us will discuss when we meet. And I was surprised when I met with Council Narikis and Council Sprague, just how these decisions are made. So I think it is important to let people, let them chime in and just say, hey, now that there's more, we can ask for more.
So you wanna reopen the process?
Sorry?
Are you trying to reopen the application process?
Yeah, give them extended, since we've added $100,000.
Well, then you have...
To give them two weeks to submit another application.
If there's a motion to do that?
Well, I don't know that I need it. The problem is, because it's a committee meeting.
You can appoint people to ad hoc committees, council committees, but this is a decision whether or not to reopen a process.
Right, but I'm saying we can also decide when we have the meeting, right? So if I say, we're not gonna have a meeting for a month.
Yeah.
I could say, we're not gonna have a meeting for a month, so we might as well do it. That's all I'm saying.
You could decide that.
Strong arbitrage.
But I still think that council may want to make a decision.
I understand, I understand. So anyway, do you wanna make a motion of that effect?
Well, if I can, I think if you're gonna open it up, I think you need some criteria, you know, and if in fact, you're thinking, we, the council are thinking, part of that is aimed towards homelessness, you know, we ought to somehow preface it that, you know, this year, you know, there's an emphasis on homelessness activities, so that you're not getting, you know, every request for balloons and, you know, everything else, you know, so that you can target, you know, who you want applications from. And again, past, we've said, we're evaluating based on the impact with Lincoln City residents, because these are Lincoln City resident dollars. So it's nice that a Lincoln County nonprofit, you apply... So, it's nice that a Lincoln County nonprofit, you, applies, but in their request form, there oughta be their impact on Lincoln City residents.
I think, I've looked at that, too, and I mean, that's been taken under consideration.
Yeah, but I think if you're going out and writing, I don't know how you're advertising, we'd advertise to entities, and so there oughta be a description for them. And I, you know, I'm all for, you know, what hasn't been there is homeless look, let's make sure we put that in there, a request board. So I'd make the motion to, you know, open up the process, reapply, invite nonprofits for the outside agency.
For how long?
Month of July.
30 days?
Given to the end of July.
I'd second that motion. So we have a motion to second, any discussion?
One question. I did not hear in the motion, so I'm assuming that we would not be putting anything about homelessness in there, because I did not hear that kind of an emphasis.
You said that.
I did.
You said homelessness.
With an emphasis on...
I guess I kinda wanna hear that in the motion.
I'll amend the motion with an emphasis on homelessness. What do you like?
Would it be possible just to indicate that, you know, preference would be given?
Those serving the homeless population.
That's what I'm talking about, is, preference will be given, kind of a thing.
That's a good one.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have a motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Yeah. I'll jump on in, guys.
We'll go home tomorrow.
I'll start.
Okay, yeah, please.
A lot of the ones that I remember seeing in the packet were local, homeless-based organizations requesting very specifically for families and residents of Lincoln City's homeless population to better their thing. It's already been in the process, so to do it again, I mean, you've said, the mayor said, they ask for money, sometimes they don't get it, sometimes they get more. The same thing can happen to the, you know, the three organizations that really are specific to Lincoln City's family homelessness population. Why does there need to be another process to allow for more people that have already applied? We've had $230,000, $230,000 worth of requests for $150,000. We want more requests?
I think we already had a deadline, we already have requests. The committee can decide where the money's split up. They don't have to have specific amounts. Just 'cause we have more money doesn't mean we need to get more requests. They've asked for what they wanted. Probably a lot more than what they...
Only the rookies. Only the rookies, or something.
Well, most of the organizations ask for a lot more than they think they're gonna get.
Mr. Mayor, after she's ready to...
Yeah, I guess.
I would just say, I don't think we need this. I think the three of you that are on this committee understand that homelessness was what we were trying to target this time, and I think, just as Councilor Holwood said, there's much more money in requests than we have money to give, so I think you already have your marching orders.
I'll just throw in my two cents here, is I would love the idea that if we did this, that someone hearing it tonight or tomorrow would go, heck, we should've jumped in on that, and now we can. We missed our chance, and now we got a chance, so that's why I'll be voting for it. So, any further discussion?
Well, I, just... To go back, I think we would, I would like to look at the process of how we get these requests prior to next February, whenever the letters go out.
Great, great idea.
That was brought up in the budget discussion process, and it was one we will be looking at.
Then I guess we're done. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails. Okay, anything else? Okay, so then, based on that, we, Kathy, we are going to have a meeting here, it'll be City Council Northwest Conference Room, City Hall, Northwest Conference Room, 5:00 PM, Monday, July 3rd. Okay? So, public is invited, but we will be taking no public testimony, be recorded and announced and all that. I don't have a darn thing. Thank you all for your patience.
Let's say 4th of July.
Yeah, and to staff, thank you. I know you guys have already put in a heck of a long day, and thanks for being there, appreciate it. If there's nothing else, may God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City. We adjourned. Oh, my goodness. Brutal.
We only ignored about three or four things.
Yeah.